Okay.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order.
The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Shadi Faradi of the High Faith Community.
Mr. Faradi, are you here? I'd be happy to offer the invocation if the council's okay with that. And then afterwards, we will have council member Kathy Ward offer the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to gather together today as a city to contemplate and to decide on the many policy matters and the items that are of importance to the city of San Clemente. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this beautiful city. We're thankful for our friends and our neighbors. We're grateful for the beauty that we encounter every day and for the wonderful citizens that we get to live side by side with. And we are especially grateful, Father, for the ability to live in this country and to have it protected by men and women all across the globe who look out in our interests and who are safeguarding us. We ask Thy blessings upon this council, upon our residents, that we'll be able to conduct the business of the city tonight in a manner that is professional and that is in the interest of the residents. And we also ask that in all that we do, that we will remember that we are all neighbors and friends and that we should treat each other with respect and kindness. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Doncheck. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
And Mayor Ham is absent. First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Excuse me, Mayor, two items. May I make a motion that we adjust the agenda slightly? One is I'd like to move item 7A up to, up here before, or I'm sorry, after oral communications. And secondly, I'd like to move item 11A2, which is the Orange County Transportation Authority, up to immediately follow the toll road update since it has bearing on the toll road update. So those would be two adjustments that I propose in the agenda order.
Okay, so public hearing 7A following oral communications.
Correct.
And then we have the OCTA update to be presented at this time during the toll road update.
After the toll road update, correct.
Excuse me, after the toll road update. Great. We have a motion by Doncheck and a second by Schwartz. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, passes four zero. So we have toll road update. Great. Okay, no reportable action. We do have a card on this item. Eva O'Keefe.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the city council members, Mayor Brown. And again, thank you for your continued advocacy with the toll road. I know that you guys have been going through quite a bit of hearings. The reserve filed a temporary restraining order to, you know, try to stop the toll road. Unfortunately, got kicked out by a technicality. The new date for the hearing in Riverside is June 24th. In the TRO, in the temporary restraining order, we discussed a lot of homes that have fallen out of escrow once they find about the toll road. If you have a home that fell out of escrow, whether it's in the reserve or not, please contact Dan Bane, the attorney with Shepherd Mullen. We also filed, the reserve also filed an amended complaint in which we actually were able to find some testimony from Valerie McFall from the TCA admitting that the preferred route was the Pico route. On the good news front, Oceanside Assembly Member Rocky Chavez is actually introducing a bill, Assembly Bill 2796, that basically redefines the road as, the toll road, as stopping at Oso Parkway. Please call all the members of the Transportation Committee. You can find the information at the Coalition to Save San Clemente Facebook page. Dan Bane actually also helped with this language. Rocky is having a press conference and everyone is invited to attend at noon at the, I think he wants to do at the Vista Hermosa Park. I think they're calling you to ask for permits. And I know that they're going to ask all the city council members. And the Coalition to Save San Clemente is having a candidate forum April 30th, 30th at Capo Beach Church with congressional candidates Levin, Applegate, Chavez. We invited Harkey, she declined, so now we're actually asking Gaspar or Marriott. And from the Coalition to Save San Clemente, we're going to be asking toll road questions, advocates of responsible recovery, they're going to be asking recovery questions. And from Capo Cares, they're going to be asking all kinds of questions. So everyone is invited and hope to see everyone hopefully at the Vista Hermosa Park at noon if that's the place for the, you know, talking about the bill, A, B, 2796. Thank you. Bye.
All right. So should I do the OCTA update that was under council member items? Okay. And I want to thank the community for all their hard work on the toll road. There's no easy answer to the solution and to see the energy and the activity across all fronts is very appreciated. So I represent District Five on the Orange County Transportation Authority. And at our last board meeting, there were two items of relevance to South County and the progress of the toll road. The first thing is that thanks to NardiCon at the county, the Regional Planning and Highways Committee, and then the board approved the adoption of Los Petronas Parkway into the master plan of arterial highways as a free secondary four-lane undivided arterial. So Los Petronas Parkway, which will open probably in June, is now being adopted into our master plan as a free arterial. So that's important. Equally important, the I-5, just when you thought we were done with our construction, there is a project afoot to take the brand-new HOV lanes down to the San Diego County border, thereby completing the HOV system in South County. And this is another solution for managing congestion in South County that doesn't involve building new infrastructure. So it's an important piece. And that study has been going forward. The TCA and Caltrans wanted a special study done on weekend traffic. We know that we have seasonal fluctuation at this end of the county. And that's not the, there is no validated travel demand model that requires weekend congestion counts. Nonetheless, OCTA did the study just to see what it was all about. And so the long story short is this, whether it's a weekend or a weekday, and you can find this on, I included it in the minutes, or I'm sorry, in the agenda this time around, we are only at 58% capacity on the freeway on average. So when this HOV lane goes through, there is no need for a toll road to be put in place. We've got the capacity. And there are a lot of, you know, there's this saying that when you have a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And so if you are the transportation corridor agencies, you build toll roads, that's your hammer. There's a lot of solutions here. We have the Lipada extension, we have the HOV improvements that have been made now to Pico, and now we have this other project that the voters voted for. And so we're going to continue to fight the good fight, to look for other solutions besides a toll road going through the community. So those were two actions that were very favorable to South County that I wanted to report back to you. Thank you.
Can you please convey to OCTA our appreciation to go the extra mile to actually study weekend traffic when it is not really a viable, valid option to do? But I appreciate it because we have that answer. And so that's really valuable to us.
Yeah. And the fact that during peak capacity, we're, you know, just slightly above 50%. And this study actually looked, I think, out into 2030, 2035. So it's not just today's reality, it's the future. And anybody who follows this, I know there's a lot of TCA activists here, there's a map and it is in the agenda packet that has a really great traffic count from the study.
Next is presentation of a proclamation to members of the San Clemente Elks Lodge declaring the first week in May 2018 as Youth Week.
Come on, everybody.
Hi, Tim. I'm good.
How've you been?
Oh, good.
Good. Look at this crowd here. Oh, thank you so much. That's great. Good to see you all. How've you been? Good to see you. Hi. How are you? Good to see you. How are you, brother? It's exciting. We've got a good group up here.
Yes, we do.
Good. Well, I have a, I'll tell you what, I'll read this proclamation if I could, and then I'd love to hear some more thoughts on this from you.
Okay.
And do it. So I have here from the city of San Clemente, and it's "To the benevolent and protective Order of Elks. And we've designated May 1st through 7th as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition to their services to community, state, and nation. And whereas you will sponsor observance during that, we contribute of junior citizens of our community. And whereas no event can be more deserving in our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent our nation's greatest resource, who in years ahead will assume responsibility for the advancement of our society, and whereas they need guidance, inspiration, encouragement that we alone can give them in order to develop these qualities for future leadership. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way from responsibilities and opportunities for citizenship. Now therefore, I, Tim Brown, Mayor of San Clemente, and on behalf of the city council and the residents, do hereby proclaim the first week of May as Youth Week. And urge all the departments of government, civic, and fraternal patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly as observants." Maybe you can tell us a little bit about what you have planned for it.
Okay, well, we have the Splash event. Molly, you know more about Splash than I do.
Concordia PTA fundraiser?
Yes. It's a Concordia PTA fundraiser that helps, what do they actually do? Come up here and tell me.
Come on, Molly.
Come on, Molly. You're my V E R, so you have to come up.
All right. So the Splash event is a fundraiser for our elementary school, which we do a lot of work with. We do a makerspace program. We're trying to gain a little extra security at our school. So there's going to be some other people speaking about later in the evening. That's one of my events. And then we're also bringing all the dads in to join the lodge to help with our volunteer work. So we're trying to get some kids in.
Get some kids in.
That's great.
All right. No, that's it. Can we get the mothers?
Oh, and the mothers. And the mothers, which really make everything happen, right? Well, we thank you so much for all the good work you're doing. Love to get a photo together if that would be okay. So you guys want to line up here?
No, we want to go up there.
Oh, you want to come up here? No. You don't believe me, you don't want to go up there.
Oh, come on.
Laura will grab a photo. If you guys want to line up right here, let's take a picture with.
We need tall people in back. Come on, Sharon, you're short like me. I am short. Got it, everyone?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, sir.
Next item on the agenda is a report by Betty Burnett, General Manager with the South Orange County Wastewater Authority concerning Sacwa State Audit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Brown. Appreciate the opportunity to be here for South Orange County Wastewater Authority. So we'll just kind of go quickly through the slides that we have here. On the next slide, you'll see that our services to the city of San Clemente, I'm not sure, can advance slides here or? There we go. South Orange County Wastewater Authority is wastewater treatment for South Orange County for about 500,000 residents. And we connect to San Clemente through your connection to the ocean outfall at San Juan Creek. So our mission, I was looking at your mission statement, our mission's a lot like yours. Yours is to have a solid community, protect your community, and provide welfare for your community. And ours is very similar. We have a focus on environmental stewardship in our wastewater treatment. So we serve the region with about 1.6 billion gallons of recycled water, which we create at three facilities. We have a capacity of 7 billion gallons in wastewater treatment, and right now, we're using about half of that due to drought and also conservation. We have community contact through education. We have over 700 kids, folks from the community who come into tour our plants, and you're more than welcome to come anytime. Recently, we had a great honor. We were named among our peers, the California Water Environment Association, named our J.B. Latham Facility Plant of the Year at the state level for a medium-sized facility, and we're quite proud of that. We appreciate your participation in our agency and on our board. You may know that recently, we completed a state audit. We had the state auditors come in and take a look at our agency and provide us with some assistance on the financial side. And what we did was take a look at some progress that we had made over time. From about 2001 to 2013, we instituted a need and took a look and said, we are going to work on improving our financial system. So much of our financial system was done outside of an enterprise system, and we decided that we needed one. So in 2014, we started that effort. We went through some planned improvements, which included getting a handle on assets and getting those evaluated and recorded. And in 2018, going through the work with the state, they concluded that our new approach to our recording of assets and keeping of our financial information met their standards that they thought were appropriate, and they gave us some recommendations. So what they basically said was, hey, continue to improve, work on your accounting of member agencies' funds, and determine whether any members are responsible for unfunded liabilities. And as a city, you would know contingent liabilities are an issue for all public agencies and us included. So the board did set a goal in 2014 for improved financial planning and accountability. And the state reported and substantiated that we had made progress and it was underway, and that was a comment, end quote, from our chairman, Dan Ferens. So again, key audit findings were to work on some reconciliation of some cash we held from the past. We did that work, and we have now identified an overage of about $354,000. And we are about halfway through determining the origination of those funds. Some of it had come from interest money that had been earned over time. And a little bit of it was recovered back by Sacwa out of the county bankruptcy years ago. They also said to us, like many joint powers agencies and agencies across the state, work on understanding your long-term pension obligations and who and how to allocate those. And we agree that's worthwhile. They said our governance structure as a JPA was similar to other kinds of agencies. And they gave us some recommendations on improving our policy on public records. We thought that, we agreed, we thought those were good recommendations. They talked with us about having a written policy to rotate our auditor. We have always rotated our auditor in a less than five-year schedule, but they said, it would be good for you to have that in writing. We agreed. And then they also said, you know, work on coming up with a better timeline on getting your audit completed, because we do finish our audit six months prior to the state requirement under state law. So that was a recommendation. So we agreed with the state auditor. It was, it was a process to go through, but I would say they were very professional and treated us well, and we got along, and it came up with some good recommendations. So our next steps in our commitment to your community and all the communities, the 10 communities and agencies we serve, is to continue and track our billing you for our actual costs of your use of our facilities, your participation with us. And again, we very much appreciate the staff that you send to us to work with us and their, the leadership that they bring to our board. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Very informative. Kathy, Molly, Steve, thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is presentation by Francisco Marmaleo and Susan Reese of Orange County Human Relations concerning Orange County Human Relations activities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. Maxinoff, and I think Chief Peters. I'm Frank Marmaleo. I'm president of the Board of Directors of OC Human Relations. And together with my fellow board member, Sue Reese, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly here. And I particularly want to express my gratitude to Joanne Bade and the City Clerk's Office for always being so gracious and accommodating. We're here tonight to report on some of the work of our nonprofit organization, OC Human Relations, in the city of San Clemente over the last year, and to present you with copies of our, of our annual report. We believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence. So we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. As I'm sure you're aware, this last year has not always been easy in our country, and we've struggled at times to remember that we're all united by our American identity. Yet, we've seen deep divisions and strife among our leaders and even among our neighbors. However, at OC Human Relations, we've continued forward with the belief that we can work together and that we do better when we do. OC Human Relations believes that, believes that our mission to build understanding among diverse residents is more important now than ever. This relationship building can contribute to a sense of community in our cities. Accordingly, OC Human Relations partners with cities like San Clemente to manage challenging issues such as the lack of civil discourse, meaningful participation of all residents in decision-making, overcoming. in decision-making, overcoming the mistrust that can make every police-community encounter more dangerous for both parties. Now, many of our programs are provided countywide, such as our hashtag Hate Free OC. It's a public awareness and education campaign, among other things, to create a hate-free environment in Orange County, to bring diverse communities together, promote peaceful, inclusive community, for everyone to thrive. To that end, for example, in fall of 2017, we launched a youth-focused campaign to educate young people about hate crimes and hate incidences. This campaign's called No Hate. That's K-N-O-W, Hate. It logged over 1 million impressions or hits online. But we'd also like to share the following information about our programming exclusively in the city of San Clemente. We mediated last year 65 cases as well as 14 family mediations in courts or community where at least one of the parties was a resident of the city of San Clemente. In collaboration with the San Clemente Police on Hate Crimes and with individuals and community groups on hate incidences, we documented one hate crime and one hate incident in San Clemente. We also conducted one police-community reconciliation case. We've worked to build a sense of community among San Clemente residents and staff through our ongoing hate crime education, victim outreach, support efforts. In conclusion, OC Human Relations has partnered with the city of San Clemente for over 25 years. We've done so to bring police and diverse residents together to build safe and respectful neighborhoods, to develop positive relationships among the broad spectrum of San Clemente residents, to address community conflict and strife, and to sustain human relations infrastructure to serve cities when crisis situations occur. We are, ladies and gentlemen, very proud of our longstanding partnership with San Clemente, as we have done so with other cities in Orange County. Together, we feel we're contributing to a safe, respectful county, to building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil should they come. Finally, I'd like to extend a personal invitation to any, to the mayor and to any member of the council and the staff to attend our annual awards gala on the evening of May 3 at The Grove Amphitheater in Anaheim as guests at my table. It's a wonderful evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you've never been there, it's really a wonderful evening. We pay tribute, and we give thanks to individuals and to groups and to organizations for their extraordinary contributions for making Orange County a community where all can live and work in a spirit of mutual respect and in the recognition of the tensile strength that diversity in all its manifestations brings. Now, one very final note. If the mayor would come forward, we would like to make a brief presentation at this time. We are, of course, very grateful to San Clemente's leadership, to its staff, to its residents, and we would like to honor the city for your support of good human relations in 2016, 2017 with the presentation of this certificate. We are so grateful for all you do for us. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. And again, for those of you who are interested, I've left my contact information with the city clerk, and we are very happy to welcome you there. Thank you both.
Thanks again.
And thank you.
All right. Take care. Wonderful. Thank you for coming up.
Presentation by Carney Campbell concerning San Clemente High School activities.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Carney Campbell. I'm the president at Linkrue with the Linkrue program at San Clemente High School. So this year, our main thing is getting ready for next year's applicants. So we had a record number of applicants this year, and we, the two councillor, or the two, yeah, councillors at our school, the two head of the Linkrue program, we took in about 100 new leaders for next year. And we had our first training day yesterday, and it went really well. We had all the new members and returning members come, and they went through some activities that they'll be doing with the freshmen, incoming freshmen next year. In the coming weeks, we'll be deciding the committee, the individual committee heads, as well as the president, vice president, and secretary for next year. That's all really for Linkrue. We're really focusing on getting the next year coming in being the, one of the best years yet. As for the rest of the school, we had ASB elections last week, so they don't have a lot going on right now. They've been really focusing as well on their coming year of students. And we have the Spamalot play that's happening right now. We had it this week, and they will be coming the next week as well. They're on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and there's showings on Saturday for matinees as well as at night. The dance concert put on by our dance team, who won at both state and nationals over spring break this past couple of weeks. They will be having their annual dance concert on the 28th and 29th, and they'll be featuring a couple of the dances that they won at state and nationals with as well. Starting the first week of May through, I think that's like the first three weeks, we will be having AP testing and IB testing, so we'll all be studying, getting those credit, college credits then. We have, and then for, as for sports, the spring sports are kind of wrapping up in the coming weeks as well, May. Yeah. Thank you.
It's exciting. I'm excited for Spamalot. I'm going to see that on Friday. You know, I can quote that entire movie verbatim, by the way. So I'll be singing along.
So are you graduating?
I am. I'm graduating this year.
Are you going to come back before you graduate, at least one more time?
Uh, yeah, we'll probably be back in May, because we have some events that'll happen in May as well.
Very good.
And I'll probably come, maybe with the, Trey and I might be back with next year's president for ASB and next year's president for Linkrue.
That's great.
Very good. Thank you. You do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address counsel on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. I have a stack.
Plenty of cards. Here's another. That's great. Well, we are, on this question, we, one, two, three, four, five, just give me a second, six, seven, nine, 10, so it's 30 minutes worth. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have an hour's worth of cards here, not including, are there any more? Okay. So we have, tell you what we'll do. We'll do 30 minutes of this. We have a public hearing, and then we will hear the balance of the cards during the second public comments section. Counsel is okay with that? Okay. So let's start with, first is Mary Franta. Following Mary is Anthony LaFranco.
Hello, everybody. My name's Mary Franta, and I've lived in San Clemente for four years. I love it here, but there's a question about what is our standing with the sanctuary state law that just went into effect without anyone having a vote about it. I'm here to voice my opposition to the sacrament, sanctuary state that Governor Jerry Brown and Xavier Becerra have imposed on our state. I did not vote for this law, and they do not speak for me. I'm here to ignite the resistance to this outrageous law that protects criminals from prosecution and deportation. The issue for me is clearly a law enforcement issue regardless of any of our views on legal or illegal immigration. I think there's a case in point, I think all of you remember, that happened in San Francisco, where it was the case of the Jose Inez Garcia Zarate. He was five times deported, illegal homeless alien, who shot and killed Catherine Steinle as she and her father were strolling on the pier. Zarate was arrested in San Francisco on drug charges and was supposed to be handed over to federal authorities, but due to the confusing and confounding sanctuary laws, San Francisco authorities released Zarate back into the streets. ICE wanted him because he had outstanding warrants for drug possession in Texas, but there was confusion with these ridiculous sanctuary policies. At minimum, Zarate should have been deported, but he was left to go out into the streets to fire guns and kill innocent people. California is becoming a free-for-all state. We need to hold our heads up high and say enough. The list of cities and counties who want to overturn the sanctuary law is growing. San Diego last night held a vote. I don't know what the outcome is, but other neighboring cities are Orange, Escondido, San Juan Capistrano, Newport Beach, a few more, Barstow, Hisperia. President Trump threatened to cut federal dollars to any sanctuary city or state where policies limit the cooperation between local law enforcement and federal immigration authorities. I hope that you will correct this situation and exempt San Clemente from being a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Anthony LaFranco. Following Anthony is Tony Rubellino.
Do you remember me? How are you? Good evening, Anthony LaFranco, San Clemente. Cities are starting to push back on Sacramento, Los Alamos, Escondido, Newport Beach, and we are sick of the politics in Sacramento, borderline illegal. And to her point, I know that you guys aren't going to vote on sanctuary city. You'll probably be the last to do that, but what we need to do, though, is resist Sacramento on all fronts, because Sacramento is, and you're seeing a lot of resistance right now. Sacramento, what they are subjecting us to as Californians right now is, it's just god-awful. But back to why I'm here. I worked my butt off to save my money, to raise my family in San Clemente. And the San Clemente of five years ago is not the San Clemente today. And can we blame that on California? I don't know. I would have to argue, though, that the epicenter of the progressive movement is Beverly Hills. And I'm in Beverly Hills a few times a year. I'll go four or five, I'll make a right on Wilshire down to Santa Monica Boulevard. How many homeless people do you think I see on Wilshire Boulevard in Beverly Hills? Goose egg. Goose egg. So whatever they're doing, we need to do. And I know they have their own police department, et cetera, and so forth. And you can rest assured that the ACLU will never sue Beverly Hills. Do you know why? Because Beverly Hills is the ACLU. This is North Beach in our town. This is unacceptable. This is, if we don't resist, if we don't have the cojones to fight back, we're going to be crushed. We will be crushed. Our property values will go down, our local economy will go down, it's going to spiral out of control into the gutter. I did not move to Venice Beach. That is a liberal town in LA County with homeless people. It's not the town I moved to. I moved to San Clemente. This is a conservative town. This is the town of Richard Nixon with conservative values. We have to fight back. I know you guys aren't going to take a position on sanctuary cities, but at least push back. Don't be afraid of a judge that says, "If he's camping on the sidewalk, we're going to sue you," or "You can't take him to jail for camping on the sidewalk." Can we at least mandate that there is no loitering 1,000 feet within a school in San Clemente? The girls' cross-country team almost tripped over a guy who was on the sidewalk camping out today at the McDonald's on Pico. Don't be intimidated by the ACLU or judges. You need to fight back. Other cities are, and this movement is only beginning. This is our community, and you guys need to fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next is Tony Rubellino. Following Tony is Jean James.
Laurie, you can just let it run. It should advance on its own. All right. Well, I'm back, and I, I'm just completely disappointed with this entire team up here. Our concerns seem to be falling on deaf ears. We're up here, we talk about this repeatedly, this issue with the transients overtaking our town, and you just, as Jean James said, a collective shrug. It's, we're just being dismissed. I mean, we've got drug deals going on at McDonald's with high school students, shrug, pass the buck. Last time I was here, when all this was going down with the motels, a lot of pointing fingers at props in California at a state level. What are we doing here, within our city right now? Shrugging. Which brings me to fam. Mary has great resources. She has a big heart. But fam is not a catch-all for your lack of action. Okay? Why aren't we talking about creative solutions like privatizing fam so that we can make sure those who need a hand up are getting the services they need that don't, that require a drug check to make sure that they're not benefiting from resources so that the addicted transients on the street are not the ones taking services away from those who truly need it? Why aren't we talking about things like that? Which then brings me to this Public Safety Task Force that was canceled last week, last minute because of Quorum. Not sure what happened there. It was on the schedule up until it wasn't. Monthly meetings, midday, midweek, and you complain about low attendance. Steve Swartz, Ham, if he was here, you know, what did you expect? And I wasn't there, but I heard the speakers complain that they felt belittled by Mr. Swartz and Mr. Ham, that they were interrupted frequently during their speeches. And again, I wasn't there, but there were a lot of things that were said that were not so favorable of the two of you. Our budget meeting is coming up. I know that. We're talking about police force. Lieutenant Peters can only do what he can do to protect our city with the resources he's given. We need more boots on the ground, plain and simple. He needs more staff to be able to spread through the city. We're a beach town. We're being overrun. And don't add two to three officers in the next budget. We know with leaves and promotions and transfers, it's going to diminish. Go five or six to compensate for when we're down a few. And last part, this is an election year, and I want to know, I want to make sure everybody knows that San Clemente citizens demand change. This team is not cutting it. Ms. Donchuk, Mr. Brown, Ms. Ward, I know your seats are up. Thank you for your service, but it's time to fill your seats with somebody else, somebody that's going to be a little bit more proactive and listening to our concerns with the plight of the city. Mr. Swartz and Mr. Ham, my intention is to make you the minority vote after the November elections.
Thank you, Tony. Next is Jean James.
And I'd like to say I announced in November that I would not be seeking reelection, so if you'd like to step up and file papers, that would be excellent.
Ladies and gentlemen, the preamble of the Constitution of the United States of America is very clear. The framers of our Constitution were brilliant men whose writings were divinely inspired and guided. Their sacred words have served us very well for 230 years. Each of you have taken an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. The framers set six goals for the Constitution: Form a more perfect union, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and for prosperity. This is the supreme law of the land. When evil doers in Sacramento subvert our Constitution, it is time for good men to take action. As Edmund Burke said in Parliament more than 240 years ago, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." This is, this is not a states' rights issue. No state has a right to set immigration policy by inhibiting the federal government's role in ensuring our domestic tranquility, providing for a common defense, promoting our welfare, and ensuring our liberty and the future of our future generations. Quite the opposite. The liberals, progressives, and socialists that have an agenda, and their agenda does not include our rights as American citizens here in San Clemente. I plead with this body to stand up against the evil of Sacramento, take a position on the excesses of the socialist state we live in, join Orange County and our neighboring cities in rejecting the concept of sanctuary state and sanctuary cities. Send Brown, Newsom, and Becerra a message, and that message is, here in San Clemente, we are committed American patriots, and we love the United States of America and our Constitution. I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, are you American patriots, or are you going to be woefully submissive wimps who do nothing and act as the rhino lapdogs for the socialists in Sacramento? Take a stand. Follow the will of your citizens. Follow the will of your citizens. Live up to your solemn oath to our Constitution. Be soldiers in the pursuit of our freedom. Thank you.
Next is Cord Bauer. Following Cord is Eva O'Keefe.
Good evening. This is extemporaneous. And actually, Eva O'Keefe stole a lot of the thunder because, well, she deserves to do that. What she and a lot of other people in San Clemente have done is they've stepped up and they fought against the TCA. And I just wanted to fill you in. Besides speaking with Rocky Chavez several times, he had his chief of staff come to the TCA meeting and speak on our behalf against the TCA. It's because we asked. You don't ask, you don't get. The TRO that she also mentioned, that was done by Dan Bain. He's a resident here, and he's also a lawyer, but that represents dozens of hours, it's over 200 pages. It could be longer, it should be longer, and hopefully we'll get more people that will say that they've been impacted. Excuse me. Just this last Saturday, we met with Tony Rikakis, the DA of Orange County, for over two hours. He met with us because we asked him. And he was very receptive. We were talking about sober home issues, we were talking about transient issues and ways to solve those problems. And he showed up because we asked him to be there. And I'd like to ask something of the city council. I do really appreciate the IBI study that you put forth. I think it's powerful, and it's a good tool for us to use. I'd like it to go farther because we need to reach beyond San Clemente with this issue. And what I'd ask is that you go back to the IBI and you say, "What would the traffic patterns be like if the 73 was free?" And I think that's powerful because you can take that information and you can take it on the road. You can go to Aliso Viejo, you can go to Lake Forest, you can even go to Mission Viejo, and you can say, "Your traffic is being impacted because the TCA has been lying to all of us, and it's supposed to be free." And this is how it would help all of Orange County. And again, I think the tool that you used is very powerful. It can become even more powerful if you added just a little bit more. Thank you for your time.
Eva O'Keefe. Following Eva is Angela Connors.
Do you have a presentation? All right, thank you again, thank you for your service. I'm here to ask for help. You know, North Beach is the entry to our city. The city spent $6 million remodeling this gorgeous building. It's the start of the Beach Trail, you know, that many of us like to use. Many people witness selling of drugs by a certain local person by 7-Eleven. Many transients congregate by Ole Hanson and openly drink and harass women and children while trying to exercise and enjoy the beautiful trail. And we've seen some photos already. Some of the parking, paid parking spots are taken by transients not paying for parking. Should I just not pay for parking myself? Are different rules for different people? I understand that, you know, homelessness is not a crime, but not obeying the law should not be tolerated. This is a gorgeous wedding on a gorgeous day. Turn around, there is someone with an open container passed out, then there is someone with an open container, and kids just strolling around, you know, nearby, probably saying hello. Again, the same situation, parking spots, loitering. This actually, one of a person said that this person in the brown jacket came with a bottle of wine to have a little party, a picnic. I wonder if I should bring a bottle of wine and hang out at the Ole Hanson myself. Same here, you know, trash, loitering, taking parking spots. I understand that a lot of this were residents that came in from the spreading the love that Todd Spitzer talked about, sending them here to San Clemente, but it doesn't mean that we have to, you know, accept this behavior. Again, more parking spots. Again, more people just loitering, hanging out. Here's a thing that, you know, we talk about homeless issues. In a quote from the San Clemente Times, "The soft-spoken, middle-aged man, who I'll not to be named, admitted if he wanted services, he could get them, but he has no desire because it's easy to buy and use drugs living on the streets." That should not be, you know, taxpayers of San Clemente should not fund this lifestyle. So the recommendation is to engage the trip team, which has been very effective in certain areas like Comino de los Maris, trespassing and loitering, obviously, more police presence, maybe a private security guard on the weekends for these gorgeous weddings, and people are paying over $25,000 to go there. Again, the Homeward Bound program from FAM is excellent, a homeless tax force like Dana Point. Budget season, follow the recommendations from the Safety Task Force and Lieutenant Peters. And again, thank you to Lieutenant Peters, to FAM, and the City of San Clemente for keeping us safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Angela Connors. Following Angela is Joe Greenfeld.
Yes, hi. My name is Angela Connors, and I'm a San Clemente resident. It was just a couple of years ago that the City of San Clemente banned cannabis businesses. Much has changed in our state and in our country since then. There are eight states that have legalized recreational use of cannabis, including California. Over 29 states have legalized medical use, including Washington DC. And both Canada and Germany use cannabis in their national healthcare system. California's cannabis market is expected to grow to $5.1 billion in 2019. And this week, the Trump administration stated it's abandoning a Justice Department threat to crack down on recreational marijuana in states where it is legal. He also stated that he will champion a new law that will give the states the authority to set their own policies. Last year, I saw an ad in this magazine, Marijuana Business Magazine, that offered a San Clemente delivery service for sale, and that price was $500,000. Cannabis is being consumed, distributed, purchased, and sold in our city, and we have no regulation for it. This state of affairs is unfortunate, and it must change. Without smart regulation, our community is subject to exposure to products from unlicensed businesses, black market, and there's no standardization or safety. The illegal products contain unregulated harmful additives such as propylene glycol, pesticides, heavy metals, and these black market products are often not packaged or handled in clean and sanitary manner. Prohibition of alcohol was a failure, just as prohibition of cannabis is a failure. In the last city council meeting I attended addressing this subject, one council meeting member stated that the City of San Clemente would not allow cannabis businesses in this city unless they absolutely had to. And I'd like to ask the city to reconsider this posture. Regulation of these already existing businesses can fit into our community to support patients and consumers to have access to safe products and material. Tax revenue can be used for wonderful programs such as youth education against opioid use, addiction, the dangers of vaping, local programs to help the homeless, which is a huge concern, obviously, from all that you hear here, and get them off the streets. Affordable housing programs for our seniors, and it can do a lot of, lot of good. The state has created legal regulation for cannabis businesses to operate with the permission of their local jurisdiction. And I want to support my community and have cannabis taxes collected from regulated businesses to be used for the wellness and community in a safe manner. Certainly, there are people who will use cannabis irresponsibly, but there's also the Parkinson's and the MS sufferers, the insomniacs, the cancer patients, the hospice patients, the veterans with PTSD. The list of San Clemente consumers is great, and their need for your protection and regulation is important. Cultivation of cannabis may not be appropriate for our coastal town, but certainly, we can bring in significant tax dollars by allowing a testing laboratory, delivery, dispensary, manufacturing, and small distribution. Thank you so much, everyone, I have run out of time.
Thank you. Next is Joe Greenfeld.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Voters in California have spoken, and they want legal cannabis. When you look at the numbers, those who approve the initial medical cannabis initiative added to those who approved the recreational initiative, we see that over 60% of all San Clemente voters want some form of legalization. As representatives of these voters, you are required to provide the regulations and ordinances that are necessary to reflect their stated will. You do not have the right to deny them. You do have the right to create regulations that can impose a 5% city sales tax for the direct benefit of seniors, affordable housing, homeless, and teen opioid programs. Of course, as voters, we must be careful what we wish for. With legalization come brick-and-mortar storefront dispensaries. With brick-and-mortar storefront dispensaries come crowds, loitering, trash, armed security guards, unsavory characters. However, in this case, perception is not necessarily reality. We also have major concerns that children will walk by these storefronts and be further exposed. We approved legal cannabis, but didn't consider where these storefronts would be located. Legalized cannabis, yes, but not in my backyard, nimby. What is the sensible solution that can service the need for cannabis for the 70-year-old grandmother sick with cancer, the 22-year-old with muscular dystrophy, the 83-year-old man with Parkinson's? How do we responsible citizens and representatives reconcile the need for regulation with the discretion desired? It's delivery. There are many businesses already operating that offer exclusively the medical delivery of cannabis. Creating a delivery business license would be consistent with existing business practices and provide more transparency and traceability for regulators. Additionally, would allow us to provide sufficient access to medical patients while keeping storefront dispensaries at bay. Delivery is the perfect answer to all the questions and concerns at hand about cannabis. Delivery is secure. Delivery is private. Delivery is personal and invisible to the public. It is a transaction behind closed doors between consenting adults with absolutely no exposure to children. Location of the dispatch center is hidden from the public, eliminating security concerns. Delay, and the matter will eventually be taken out of your control completely. Already Senate Bill 1302 is making its way through Sacramento. This bill strips local municipalities from denying delivery into their cities from licensed delivery services outside of their cities. That means the City of Santa Ana's 20 or so licensed dispensaries is and will continue delivering here along with the 30 not yet licensed delivery services that operate here. Issue licenses to all delivery services that meet the criteria, which you will lay out, and let the free market do its job, and weed out the bad operators. And yes, the pun was intended. To summarize, do nothing and allow the black market to continue to flourish, completely unregulated, with no oversight. Overburden delivery services with impossible regulations, prohibitions, and the black market will surely flourish. Act now. Do your jobs, enable the will of the voters, provide the necessary regulations and licensing to bring the honest operators out of the dark. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mike Rainier. Following Mike is Paul Middleton. Mike Rainier?
I just wanted to speak to the council for a couple of minutes, maybe a little bit less, about cannabis. I know that there's been a couple of people that have come up here and said a couple of things. They've mentioned about the Trump administration and whatnot, the recent developments last week, Thursday, with Senator Cory Gardner from Colorado being able to guarantee... There's no such thing, it really isn't 100% guarantee in politics, but being able to contact the nine governors that are currently involved with a medical marijuana or legal cannabis scene in their state, and ultimately, of the over 450 municipalities in California that allow businesses. I'm involved in the manufacturing side, in the distribution side of the business. I'm a resident of San Clemente. We work with a lot of companies around the state, but we're not based in San Clemente. I wanted to talk to, speak to the issue of the council not really being comfortable, the town not being comfortable to put cannabis out because of children, because of zoning, because of, and what happens with, and where we're at with the current political climate of everything. I was going to offer the eastern side, if anything could be allowed, manufacturing, distribution. I think retail scares people. You know, I don't want to speak against anything in the cannabis, but there's just a lot of money to be made to go to certain things that the city could use. I really believe in the plant. I believe that it has good things, good qualities, if it could be responsibly taken by companies who have proof of funds, who have a proven track record to be able to give the community something to look, to fall back on, to be able to use funding to further promote positive change in the community. That's why I got into it. I came from the real estate side of things, from a very ultra-conservative Republican background, and I just see more and more Republican ultra-conservatives coming into the scene. I know I'm kind of rambling, but ultimately, I believe in it. I think you should have a policy for it, some sort of, something that you have for this town. The town could make a lot of positive change. There's problems with the homeless, there's problems with, like, everyone's gotten up here and talked about people coming in, homeless coming in from Santa Ana and all other areas. Try to clean it up. That requires more money. I think cannabis is one of the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next is Pappy Middleton or Paul?
Mr. Mayor and council, my name's Paul, Paul Middleton, and for 25, 30 years, they've called me Pappy because I'm an old geezer. I'm 71 years old. Six years ago, my wife passed away from cancer. She didn't die from cancer, she died from the treatment. Radiation, chemotherapy, did or didn't. A few years ago, I met a young man out here in California that had formulated a drink out of kombucha tea, organic kombucha, with THC as one additive, or CBD, which is the I now work with the foundation, I'm on the board of the Kind Spirits Foundation. We work with wounded vets, of which I'm a vet of the 82nd Airborne Division in 1968. We work with children with epilepsy, with CBD, which, again, is the non-psychoactive side of cannabis. And we work with cancer patients, who, four friends of mine, after losing my wife, have all been spared. They did not do any conventional medication or hospitals. They used cannabis extracts, and all four of them had stage four cancers, two with pancreatic, one with lymphoma, and one with lung cancer, and all four of them are cancer-free today and living a wonderful, wonderful life with their families. And one of them, she was stage four cancer, and I saw her, she's the wife of a guitar player out of Northern California that's very famous, and when I saw her gain now, she was about a month or two away from death. Five years have gone by right now, and she's living her life, and she didn't change a thing. I sat in Las Vegas at a cannabis expo while she smoked a little cigar and had a margarita after being cancer-free for four or five years. She said, "I didn't believe it was going to happen." It did. So I offer my hope that your community can find a way to do the right thing with the cannabis industry and manufacturing. Again, my product company with our drink, we do nothing but the finest quality that we can bake. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we'll hear the balance of the cards during oral communications, part two.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing relates to reconsideration of the conditions of approval portion of the previously approved permits for the outlets at San Clemente Freeway Oriented Signs located at 101 West Avenue de Vista Hermosa.
Mayor, my firm had a prior representation of the applicant in this permit, so I'm going to see my seat.
I understand. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. Hi, Amber.
Hi.
Hi, Omar. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. Amber Gregg. Oh, yep, thank you.
Before we hear a staff presentation or take any action of this matter, the council does need to entertain a motion to reconsider the matter.
I can hear it. Testing?
I'll make a motion to reconsider this matter.
Let's, could you repeat yourself one more time for the folks?
Yes. Before we hear a staff presentation or the council can open the public hearing, the city council needs to entertain a motion to reconsider the matter.
Okay.
So moved.
Kathy moved it. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Ward, a second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Who's opposed? Passes 4-0. Are we okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Omar. Hi, Amber.
Hello. Good evening, city council members. Amber Gregg, city planner. So before you tonight is a reconsideration of only the conditions of approval portion of a project that was heard on March 6th by the city council. That project had to do with outlet signs at the outlets at San Clemente, and what the city council approved was four project identification signs, 17 tenant signs, and five hotel signs. There was a standard condition of approval that was absent from this resolution, and this is a condition of approval that is put on every entitlement in the city from staff waivers all the way on up to planning commission, city council projects. And what that condition says is that the applicant shall consent to these conditions of approval that are imposed on them within 30 days. And so staff is recommending that, should this be reconsidered, that that condition be added, and that's the only thing that we are recommending. So with that, staff is available to answer any questions.
So we have had the motion for reconsideration already conducted, and then we will also have the public hearing on this item. Do we have any questions for Amber or Omar on this question to the council? Not at this time. Thank you, Amber. We'll open the public hearing then. We have five cards on this item. We would ask that if you are going to be speaking on this item, that you please get those cards submitted ASAP. Mr. Spock, would you?
Yes, I'll speak at least, I would imagine, about five minutes, and then-
Five minutes would be fine.
Brad Malaman will take over if I have any time left over, but I'll try to be very brief. I have just three points to make.
Of course.
Mayor Brown, good evening. Council members, good evening. Mr. Mashdov, good evening. I have submitted a letter to the council that contains the objections that Villa San Clemente has to this reconsideration. What is involved in this is one condition, and it is in fact a condition that is already in the conditions of approval as that was passed on March 6th. This concern, as you saw from Ms. Gregg, her formulation, the condition that's at issue is when, the timing on when the conditions of approval must be accepted. As the matter now stands, there is a term. There is no need for this. There is a term in the condition of approval that provides the time period for that, and that time period is before the building permits are allowed. That was in item number six of the conditions of approval. So if council were to take no action whatsoever on this tonight, there would still be a term that covers the term that purportedly was omitted from the item that was passed. The first issue that is implicated by the action of the staff and potentially council tonight is section 17 dot 12 dot 120 of the municipal code. That section governs reconsideration, and that says reconsideration can only occur if three conditions, this is the city's code, if three conditions are present, and all have to be present, all have to occur. Reconsideration has to be requested by a member who voted for the prevailing action. Reconsideration must be agreed to by a simple majority of the voters voting, and the motion to reconsider must come before the adjournment of the meeting at which the original vote was taken or before the minutes of that meeting are approved by the city council. So those are the three conditions that must be satisfied. The problem that is, that there isn't complying with these provisions is that this has been initiated by the staff rather than by a member of the council, and that's been confirmed both by email and with, by members of Villa San Clemente. So as the matter now stands, the council is, if it were to act on this, would be acting outside the scope of its own municipal code. The second issue is the issue of the substance of what's requested. As to the substance of what's requested, as I mentioned, there's no need for any reconsideration whatsoever because there is already a term in the conditions of approval as they were passed. So the notion that in a term was omitted is not correct. There is a term that covers when acceptance must occur and when VSC must submit its agreement to that. Now, what we're all dancing around is an issue that was brought to a head by the California Supreme Court last July in a case Lynch versus California Coastal Commission. And in that case, what the Supreme Court, the California Supreme Court held was that an applicant could not accept the benefits of a permit and at the same time oppose judicially the conditions that it objected to. So it's either one or the other. The road diverges, and an applicant must make the decision now, under the Lynch decision, that if it is going to judicially challenge, it cannot accept the benefits of the permit. It cannot go forward. If that time period is reduced to a period of only 30 days, then it will be impossible for that consideration to take place during that period of time. So I would submit to you as well that in addition to the problem of acting in a manner that's ultra-virous, outside the scope of the municipal code, that there is a constitutional limitation on the ability of the council to limit the period in the wake of the Lynch decision to only 30 days. If I have any time left, I'll yield it to Mr. Malaman.
He has eight seconds.
Mr. Malaman.
Was that three minutes or is it 10 minutes?
Did you submit a card?
I did, but if we have, if that was three minutes, I have seven minutes left. I just want to know where we are.
That was five.
Okay, I'll take five now.
You can take three, sir.
I'm allowed 10 for applicant presentation.
The applicant already spoke.
No, I'm part of the applicant.
Okay, then you have three, sir.
Well, the rules are 10, Tim. With all due respect, you can't just change the rules. So-
I'm sorry.
Mayor, you started at 7:12, Madison Spock.
So anyway, I hope to be short, Tim, but I'm entitled to five minutes under the law of this council. You didn't vote to change it. What's happening here is outrageous tonight, and Tim knows it, and you all know it. This council does not reconsider things it passes. As far as I can tell, in the last 16 years, that's never happened. In addition, well, it may have reconsidered, but it's not a standard process. Moving the minutes from before this to after this was more outrageous. Those are never turned down, and yet, two weeks ago, not only did you move them, but you illegally met in closed session. As the letter says, and it's true, you cannot call a closed session during a meeting and have it. It's illegal. California Attorney General's already stated that. This council is outrageously making this, and I will give credit to Ms. Doncheck's brinkmanship. I mean, this is a purely political act. As with respect to somehow they omitted a condition, every one of you read the resolution, or at least you're deemed to have. The city manager read it. I'm sure Amber, Ms. Daly, and everybody else read it. Nothing was omitted by accident. As far as the standard condition, nobody cites where that standard condition comes from. There's no law that says that condition exists. Things are bargained for all the time. So I didn't hear Amber one time say it's code section so-and-so or rules we apply. And further, as Madison pointed out, it is council that should be doing recalls. I want to say also that you're opening Pandora's box if you revisit this, because what's going to happen when you actually reconsider is that everything is open, not just what Amber wants you to look at. The rules say that. So anybody, any three council members could vote to eliminate all signs because you're reopening a three-hour hearing again. And I think what you're going to hear after me is citizens saying, "Let's reopen it," and they're going to push reopen it. I encourage two of you, because you need a majority, not to start this, because in the future, what's going to happen if you do this is you're going to have everybody coming to reconsider every vote taken by this council. It's a bad precedent, and it's purely a political action. You hammered the signs on May 6th. You didn't allow certain signs to be used at night. It's not the time to now go back and revisit all these things. At least, if you do, I would think that the outlets have the right to request that those signs be put in. The more signs you put in, they can be larger. I don't think that's what we want to do at this meeting and to vote for. And I think that you owe it to the citizens to know that finality is finality, not to constantly take a political act because some of your constituents want to revisit something and now do it again. Finally, as far as that closed meeting, I think once you had an illegal closed-session meeting, and I think the city attorney should rule on that tonight, I think it's deemed that you approved the minutes. And I think you moving the minutes to after this is virtually criminal because it was done intentionally to make this matter come before that vote. We have another problem. A lot of people expected this to come when it was scheduled. They haven't shown up yet. So what you've done by moving it early is you've also made it so that some of the people have the right to rely on the order of the agenda are not going to be heard tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. So we have next following, Brad, Benjamin Duran.
Benjamin Dorn, San Clemente resident, little council, little mayor. I'm not familiar with all your procedures and your protocols, so forgive me if I haven't crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. I've stood up here a few times since the temporary banners popped up in 2016, side by side with my neighbors and my fellow residents, voicing concerns about the signs. I don't believe many residents are fully aware of what's at stake. I believe the developer and the city have done a poor job communicating the proposed views to residents. One of your duties is guiding development to ensure responsible growth while preserving and enhancing our village character, unique environment, and natural amenities. It's written right there on the wall. Don't lose sight of this. I'm sure you drive by the mall often, but have you physically walked around the neighborhoods that are speaking up against the signs? Has there been conversations with residents to try and understand our point of view? Our quality life is directly impacted by your decisions. You have received hundreds of emails from residents opposed to the signage. Obviously, you can never speak directly to every resident about every concern, but boy oh boy, wouldn't it be nice just to have a normal conversation about some of this stuff? Marriage has taught me that communication is everything. Three-minute monologues on a podium is not exactly natural for all of us, but we do it anyway. We do it because we give a damn, because we care about our community, and we are proud to call San Clemente home. I am in no way anti-mall. I am in support of tasteful project identification signs. I always have been. One on the north side, one on the south side, maybe even two. This makes sense to me. The bronze color you guys agreed to seems logical, and the lighting schedule you chose is fully acceptable. We can still enjoy a sunset before the nightly lighting of San Clemente's tallest structure. The 45-foot towers just sound ridiculous. The mall is there. It's 60 feet tall. You cannot miss it. There's a reason we don't have billboards here. How is a 45-foot-tall illuminated sign tower any different? Of course, these are all just my opinions, and everybody has their own. Council, I ask you to please visualize this whole thing without artist renderings that have never been provided. Well, they have, but not accurately. I know this is challenging. I can try to paint a picture for you now. Let's look at the southeast side. Right now, there are seven tenant signs in place, banners, forgive me. You want to increase the size of those signs and then light them all up. In addition, you want to add two project identification signs and a couple hotel signs that will be lit 24/7, and a 45-foot illuminated sign tower. All of this just on the southeast side. Then there's another 10 signs on the adjacent east wall that you would like to put up. Have you really visualized this? I have, and I'm concerned, and which is why I've been standing here all this time. I really hope you think this thing through. There's a lot at stake, not just for residents that face the mall, but for the entire city. We love San Clemente. Please put residents first. Please preserve the town's integrity. Please do the right thing for our community, and please have the right conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Armenteros. Following Kathy is Pete Van Nuys.
Again, hello, council and Mayor Brown. I'm totally confused now after the last two speakers because I don't know what's going to happen after everybody, how this is going to end up, whether you go back and redo that or pass it and move forward. I have been here so many times in the last 15, maybe 18 years from when this very first started, and I'm not going to reiterate many of the things I say, and I apologize for being a little over the top sometimes with my comments and the performance of the council because there's been many of them. Ms. Doncheck's been here the longest that I've been coming. Thank you for your service. I serve on two boards. My immediate board, I serve on the Marblehead Master Board, also involved with the TCA, with the toll road situation. So I'm up to here with stuff that the city just isn't handling right. It is true, you do need to, you know, start to take issue with some of these things as far as the marijuana issue and is a way to make money. All I've heard you do is talk about that the outlets, who cares what, how it affects the residents of San Clemente. It's going to make money for the city, but yet you've turned your, a blind eye to another outlet to make money. Outlet, little pin there, another outlet to make money for the city, which would be the sales of marijuana in this city. Please, Kathy, I'd like to thank you so much for the effort that you made to drive on the highway, to look at how the lights and the proposed plan that the builder wanted to do. But in all this time, I am so disillusioned by this council, the one before it. Not once have they offered to come and meet with Broadmoor, Marblehead, any of the citizens truly affected by this, and to look and see what you're voting for that affects thousands, thousands of people in the community that you oversee. Why? I mean, is it not legal for you to have meetings outside of council with groups of residents? Can you answer? Well, I'm disappointed. I thought surely that would have been in your purview, but I guess not. But not once do any of you sitting up there know what we look at at the mall. Not one of you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next is Pete Van Nuys. Following Pete is Kristi Kindred and Nikki Mancson.
Good evening, council. I don't know what to say. I dug around on the site, website, and I did finally find some elevations possibly showing what the signage is going to look like. I don't know. I tend not to trust developers, so I doubt that this is very representative, but at least gave me some kind of idea about what we're talking about because the public really, really doesn't know. The citizens of San Clemente don't know what's coming. In their lack of wisdom, previous councils have decided they wanted an outlet mall up there, and we've got it now. And now we know how massive and ugly it actually is. Of course, that's just my opinion. Some people will find endless expanses of cement stretching on for hundreds of feet to be beautiful, a beautiful opportunity to make money selling advertising. For that is what the outlet mall actually is. It's hundreds of feet of slab-sided billboard, and the signs we're talking about are not retail signs at all, of course. They don't denote where a retail tenant has a storefront. They just blast brand advertising out. We've spent countless hours, I can recall several meetings, where we pulled ourselves through a knot hole trying to prevent freeway-facing signs, and we've dealt consistently with the freeway-facing signs that are out there. We've successfully had a lot of them removed, and the city looks better for it. And now, somehow- And now, somehow, we're gonna wind up with the ugliest continuous billboard on the I-5. I'm sorry. I hope it doesn't turn out that way. God help us.
Can we speak, Kristi Kindred and Nikki Magnusson?
Yeah, Nikki's gonna be about two minutes too late after I'm done.
Okay, she can submit a card if she'd like to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Kristi Kindred. I moved to San Clemente in 1984, so about 34 years ago. My business partner, Nikki, and I have, she's been a resident at least 20 years. Together, we operated the gift boutique at the outlets last year from July to December. We are now looking to sign a lease to reopen this June. Our store was a collaborative of local San Clemente artisans and small businesses. Our clientele included tourists, Orange County residents, as well as local San Clementeans. It was shocking to me to hear how many new customers did not know the outlets were open, or even that they were outlets. The outlets are so intuitive to us as residents that it was hard for me to imagine that this isn't obvious to everyone, but it's not the case with outsiders. In addition, it was pointed out to me that there are not freeway signs in advance of the need to exit, so they don't, if they don't already know to exit Vista Hermosa or Pico, they miss the chance to stop and shop. The outlets are beautiful. They are open. They are clean. They are convenient to park. They are wonderful to stroll with babies or walk the dogs. By far, the majority of the San Clemente residents who shop with us appreciate the quality of the outlets. We were often asked, "When will there be new stores? When will there be new restaurants?" To me, the obvious answer would be when new stores and restaurants are sure they can promote their businesses enough to make a profit. A business needs to be able to promote itself. It seems right and fair to allow the outlets to promote their existence with tasteful and obtrusive signage, which I believe that they are purporting. The outlets are here to stay. Why not join our efforts to support it in an acceptable and agreeable manner so that we can all enjoy its benefits? Not the least of which are the tax revenue and the employment opportunities for our community. Thank you.
Next is Jancy Allig, and then Paul Simons. Any other cards on this item? Jancy, I slaughtered your last name, I'm sorry.
Allig, like alligator.
I never get it right.
That's all right. My name is Jancy Allig. I'm a ten-year resident of San Clemente. As a resident, I understand the need for tax revenue from developments to maintain the streets my family drives on in the parks we frequent. As a businessperson, I understand the need for signage to make a business successful. I'm sure you agree, based on your March 6th approval of the outlets at San Clemente signage, that their signage is necessary and helps our community. It's a simple equation. Business signage equals increased sales, which equates to tax revenue for our community. The outlets at San Clemente's proposed signage is tasteful and not obtrusive, unlike most of the other freeway-facing signings that council, not this council, has approved over the years. As a resident, I ask that you continue to do the right and fair thing for the majority of the community, and not listen to the vocal minority who does not have the entire community's best interest in mind. Please do what is right, and do not change your vote, and do not force this company to make a decision in less time than it took for council to come together again to reconsider your decision on this item. Thank you.
Next is Paul Simons. Following Paul is Jason Chase. I get a last call on cards, folks. If you want to speak on this item, please submit a M.S.A.P.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Paul Simons. I am a vice president at Kurt Pringle &amp; Associates, but I am here today as chairman of the South Orange County Economic Coalition. The Economic Coalition represents the business community in South Orange County from Lake Forest through the beautiful city of San Clemente. The issue at hand today really should be settled. I think back to the idea that perception is reality, and the perception in the business community is that this city is becoming anti-business for taking steps just like this. An issue revolved around signs that has been wrestled and debated and talked through and spoken through, and then it was settled, and then we decide, well, maybe it's not so settled, and let's reconsider it. And considering that only a city council member, not a staff, can request reconsideration per the code, at present time, no council member, as my understanding, has requested a reconsideration of the March 6th sign approval. If there is a reconsideration at all, it should be to grant the signage as authorized by the previously approved master sign program, which has never been set aside by the court. And then I would also just say that the staff's request for reconsideration is only in an attempt to invalidate Item 6 in the approved conditions, which requires the outlets to consent prior to the issuance of building permits for the signs rather than within 30 days. I will yield the rest of my time and ask that this council make the right decision for the betterment of not only the residents, but the business community, which offers so much to this city and the region itself. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jason Chase. Following Jason is Vicky McMurchy.
Good evening, City Council. You may remember me. My name is Jason Chase, and I'm a seven-year resident of San Clemente. And I've also been the customer service manager for the outlets at San Clemente since they opened. As stated previously, I have personally greeted thousands and thousands and thousands of people from all over the world, including many from right here in San Clemente, and even some from right here in this room. One thing we do in customer service is find out where people are coming from. We currently have a database of people that have personally visited our customer service center. That includes over 25,000 names. Out of curiosity, I cross-referenced this list with people that gave a zip code of 92672 or 92673, and found that 4,473 people from San Clemente have physically visited customer service and gave us their information. And I can tell you that with certainty, only one of those people have ever complained about the signs. In fact, the majority either believe signs are essential, or they have no opposition to them at all. Furthermore, I would like to add that a copy of the environmental impact report and a three-foot example of an individual letter has been on display, and not one time has anybody asked to see it. I also quite often proudly wear my name badge while I'm out and about in the city. I volunteer once a week at the pet shelter. I have a gym membership. I dine out, and I shop in our city, and I genuinely like talking to people. I have found that most people truly want us to succeed, and they would like to see our center expand further. If you could somehow take a poll of the entire city of San Clemente, I thoroughly believe you would find that the vast majority of residents would be surprised to find out that signage at the outlets is still being debated. I'm aware that several emails have been sent out urging residents to attend this meeting to voice their opposition. The email clearly states, "Last chance. This is your last chance to gripe about the outlet mall signage permit again. This will not work without a good turnout. This is truly a last chance must-attend meeting. When that chance is gone, it's gone." The email has made it clear that if you oppose the signage at the outlets, you need to attend this meeting. As we look around, it's obvious that only a small group of people really oppose the signage at the outlets, and I mean no disrespect to those of you that are here. It is my belief that the proposal before you today only deserves, as a benefit, the low percentage of people that do not want the outlets to have signs, and quite frankly, do not want to see the center succeed, which honestly seems like the real motive. The proposal does not take into consideration or give merit to any of the thousands of residents that support our center and have no oppositions to the outlets having signage. As a knowledgeable and reasonable resident of San Clemente, I ask you not rescind or change the approval that has already been given. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Vicky McMurchy. Following Vicky is Abigail Gazda.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, members of City Council, city manager, and city staff. My name is Vicky McMurchy, and I am the marketing and special events manager for outlets at San Clemente. And I have been a resident of San Clemente for 11 years. Last time I attended this meeting, you heard a number of rational reasons that signage makes sense for the outlet mall, and you voted favorably. One thing I've heard tonight is that the residents didn't get enough notice and felt blindsided by the March decision, so I wanted to review a quick timeline. On April 13th, 2017, the city of San Clemente hosted a supplemental environmental impact report meeting at city offices. Public noticing was done prior to the meeting, and renderings were available at the meeting. City staff took time to hear all resident concerns and suggestions for the EIR, and provided an email address to provide even, for residents to provide even more feedback for those that could not attend the meeting. The EIR was completed on November 13th, 2017, and public commenting was open and encouraged until January 5th. As a side note, literally all of our proposals and documents related to the outlet project are available for review online on the city's website. This includes color swatches, proposed heights, lighting info, site plans, elevations, icon tower info, et cetera. On November 28th, we, the outlets at San Clemente, hosted a signage open house. Though not required, public noticing was sent out prior to the open house. Additional notices were even sent out outside of the required 300-foot recommendation. Examples of signage and mockups were shown, and copies of the environmental impact report were available. As stated, it was not required of us to host the event for signage review or approval, but we wanted to host because we knew that there was a lot of rumors and misconceptions floating around, like LED boards, et cetera. And we wanted our staff to be available to answer any questions and to show examples. On December 6th, 2017, a planning commission hearing occurred. Public noticing was done 30 days prior to the meeting. The agenda was available online prior to the meeting, and I believe notice was placed in the OC register. And finally, on March 6th, 2018, this council met for approximately six hours, it was glorious, and voted 5-0 to move forward with your amended signage package for the outlets. Public noticing was done. The agenda was available online. I believe notice was placed in the OC register. The meeting was public and available to watch online. People even came and showed up to speak, because they watched online. I find the claim that residents were blindsided a bit baffling, as the timeline I just provided shows more than a year of meetings and outreach. Obviously, much more has occurred since 1998, when this project all began. In conclusion, I ask that the city council stick to their original votes in favor of signage and vote no, and oppose the staff recommendation to reconsider the prior sign approval. Thank you.
Abigail Gazda. Following Abigail is Charles Mann.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Gazda. I'm here to represent the Chamber of Commerce. I accepted this opportunity to speak before I lost my voice, so I kept the opportunity. I kept it because we're very passionate about supporting the signage and request that you keep your votes, because, you know, the chamber really is here to support a thriving business and a thriving community, and the chamber, or excuse me, the outlets completely represent an opportunity to continue a thriving community and a thriving economy here in San Clemente. And, you know, you guys see the staff here, and they're completely involved in the community, and it continues to create an opportunity for people to come in and out, and it hasn't even fully developed. And obviously, signage is a complete part of that program, and everything blossoming and thriving as well. And so without the signage, it's really, it's really just a big, like that empty big wall is a big question mark, especially the numbers representing out-of-towners coming in and how quickly it is that they can pass right by. And not only are people coming to the outlets to shop at the outlets, they are here to discover how amazing San Clemente is. There's that walking, the walking trail right there, where you can look over and see 100 more opportunities to discover how beautiful and wonderful San Clemente is. So I don't need all this time. I appreciate everything that you guys do and all the commitment that you've had over this time doing for the project.
Thank you, Abigail. Charles Mann. Following Charles is, and our final speaker, Steve Knoblock.
I would ask that you reconsider the sign approval, because there was missing information such as the residents did not, the input from the residents wasn't available when you made that decision with a 230-foot page document that was handed out. And I think the decision was given to either A or B, as opposed to something in between, which is what could have been approved by the city council. Furthermore, there was a lot of confusion on April 3rd meeting between the north wall, the southeast wall, and the east wall, and I don't believe that the city council even knew where the signs were going to be. I know Chris Hamm had the drawing, but if you, if somebody put a gun to my head and said, "Draw me where the signs are going to go," and I was present in the April 3rd meeting, I would not be able to put the signs up. And I believe that most of you wouldn't be able to do that either. There was also a lot of confusion on the number of signs. The mall was saying that it was 17 signs, but yet the city council approved 26 signs. How did that happen? It baffles me that we can get snookered into way more signs than we originally had discussed. The, it's amazing that the 26 signs are 24 signs more than the planning commission had approved April 30th in 2006. In fact, Commissioner Doncheck at the time had said that any sign on the walls, on the facing of the mall would be a threat to the integrity of the architecture. And that was one of the few things that I've agreed with Commissioner Doncheck at the time. Nevertheless, the residents don't know what has been, what went on last council meeting, and I think it's time that the council would actually spend some time with the residents that are directly affected and be able to make decisions on helping what the residents want, as opposed to advertising signs, which nobody really wants. Finding signs is a good thing, and I don't have anything against the mall or wish it all the success, but I just, San Clemente is something special. We're not like every other town around us, and I just propose that we keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Steve. Please step up, and then I received a card from Richard Boyer. Are there any more cards? Last, last call. I mean it this time, I promise. Obviously, it's not effective, so Steve, and then Richard Boyer.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, members of the council. My name is Stephen Knoblock, a longtime resident of San Clemente, former member of the city council and assistant general counsel of the Craig Realty Group. During the two city council meetings since the March 6th approval of the freeway-oriented signs, you've been told by a number of the opponents that the city was misinformed about the signs, that the approval happened so fast the city didn't know what it was doing, that you were bullied into approving the signs, that you were even told that members of the city council bullied other members of the city council to approve the signs. And again and again, you were told you just plain got it wrong, you need to revoke your decision. Nothing could be farther from the truth. The decision made last month was made as a result of an over-two-year-long process with an exhaustive, now-certified, environmental review, which generated literally hundreds of illustrations, all made available to the staff and the public. More than six public meetings were held, and our own public outreach was held, which many of the opponents participated in. There were over 40 speakers at the public meeting when the signage was proposed, the majority of which spoke in favor of the signage. Let me be crystal clear about why we are here this evening. This is not to correct an inadvertent mistake that the staff made, but rather, it is a 30-day poison pill ploy by your legal team to deprive the outlets of its quickly approaching court day, an attempt to deprive it of its constitutional rights of due process and the vested rights for freeway-oriented signage that was granted by this council over a decade ago. This attempt at obfuscation will not, if approved, be allowed to stand. It will be met with yet another action to a higher tribunal, whose duty it is to assure that fairness and the rule of law is upheld. I say this not to browbeat, or to harass, or intimidate anybody. I state this only as a fact, which we lament to have to state. Let me close by saying, I'm not sure why anyone would have such animus toward a business which was recruited by the city to come here, which generates far and away the greatest sales tax revenue for the city, and which employs over 1,000 employees, the majority of which reside and raise their families in San Clemente. Suffice it to say, the city should do the right thing, and we respectfully request that you deny the request for reconsideration. Thank you very much for your time.
And our final final speaker after Richard is Nikki Magnusson.
Hi, my name is Richard Boyer. I am the president of San Clemente Citizens for Integrity and Development. I was invited 11 and 1/2 years ago to become the president of that organization. I have nothing at stake here. I was just invited, I accepted the invitation. I had taken an interest in the outlet mall, which, for two years, the picture on the city website showed a clean appearance from the freeway, blank walls. When the pressure was exerted in 2006, suddenly that picture came down, and a picture went up with signs on the walls. You go back and look at the website, it's, you have to go to the Wayback Machine, Internet Archive, to find it, but for two Archive to find it, but for two years, it looked like, wow, that looks like San Clemente. And people understood that there was a quid pro quo. The discretionary sign permit for the interior signs allowed an abundance of oversized and bright signs, and there were a lot of monument signs, the whole idea being that we would continue to adhere to our very strict freeway-oriented sign code. And the idea that there's anything to do with money there, it's only money related to the lease condition. It goes directly in the developer's pocket. It's on his website still, I don't believe he owns it, but on his website, he still says Carlsbad is the highest producer, highest-producing outlet mall anywhere. There's no trace of it from the freeway. I lived in Carlsbad for a year, and I never knew the thing was there, but yet it makes money. You don't need signs. It's today's tax day, it's also Representation Day. There's a nationwide effort that started a few years ago, an anti-corruption movement, and I think that Tax Day and Representation Day, no taxation without representation, is just a perfect example, or the perfect theme, for what I hope council will do. And looking at the municipal code here, something that wasn't mentioned, it says reconsideration should take place at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the decision-making body following the decision to reconsider. And I've been accused of political brinksmanship. That's because I am slow in preparing the package that I gave you with, I had good intentions of getting it to you in a timely manner, I failed to do that, that's my fault, I apologize. But I believe that there's a lot of useful information in there that provides the perspective. The first sign exception permit was for three signs, those were denied. It's just been more and more intense since then. Thank you.
My name is Nikki Magnuson. I've been a resident of San Clemente since 2001. I'm also the trustee and founder of San Clemente Christian School, and I apologize, I had a prepared statement that I left at home, but I just wanted to express our school's support in general of the outlet mall and their request for signage. The outlet mall has been such a great support of our school, which is a nonprofit. They've opened their doors for us in so many ways, and we just, I just wanted to publicly, on behalf of our school and our staff and our parents, express our support for their desire for the signage that they're requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. I will close the public hearing. Got a few questions for you, Omar. If it'd be okay if I went first, counsel? So a few comments were, legal questions were asserted by the applicant. Perhaps, I mean, you probably took note of them as well, I'll just remind you of a few of them. One is, is that, that staff could not bring a motion to reconsider before us. Can you just speak very quickly to the fact that, you know, we made the motion to reconsider, and perhaps, maybe I didn't understand that very well, and you might be able to give us some clarity?
Well, I don't really understand the argument because it was a, yeah, the microphone is not working, so. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So it was actually the council who made the motion to reconsider, and, you know, and that's why I recommended that before you can have a public hearing or staff presentation, the council needed to make that motion, entertain that motion first. And that's actually what happened.
Okay, and then there was also a question about the ability to open a closed session during a city council meeting, whether or not that is legal or we're able to do so?
Closed session?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how closed session affects this particular action. You know, and if you're talking about Brown Act, compliance with the Brown Act for purposes of the reconsideration, this matter was on the agenda at least 72 hours before, it actually was before 72 hours, more than 72 hours, it was on the website. Notices of public hearing were actually mailed and printed in the newspaper. So all of the required notices and procedures, both under due process and under the Brown Act, have been met, so I don't see any basis for preventing the council from considering this action today.
Okay. I think it was a question regarding the fact that our prior meeting, we had a closed session that was convened during the council meeting.
Normally, closed sessions are for specific purposes authorized by the Brown Act, whether it be to discuss litigation, initiation of existing litigation, or threatened litigation. This matter, that you're, again, it's a public hearing, you heard testimony, you're discussing it publicly, I'm not sure how closed session affects it.
Okay. Well, we'll answer that question in due time. Another question I had was regarding, the, one of the assertions was that it would be impossible for the applicant to consider with the litigation, that it would be impossible, that it would be completed within 30 days, or that consideration could be done within 30 days. Can you speak about that question?
Well, I think that that's an interesting comment because various things. Number one, there's no question that the approvals of the signage grants the applicant a great benefit, economic benefit as well. The statute of limitations for bringing a lawsuit on the SEQA, you know, back in March 6th, you approve and certify an environmental impact report, a supplemental environmental impact report. The statute of limitations to challenge that action was 30 days, and it has already expired. So I'm not sure that it's, what's the word I want to use, unconscionable to require the applicant to accept, you know, the benefits of the approvals within 30 days. Clearly, they know how to file lawsuits. On March 6th, I learned that they have multiple lawsuits against the city. 30 days to decide whether they're going to challenge the conditions or not, is plenty of time, in my opinion. In fact, they will have more than 30 days because your approvals occurred on March 6th, and they knew of the conditions a week before that, when that agenda was posted and the staff report was posted online, and also they received a copy. That's why I find the claim a little bit interesting, but, you know, they're entitled to make the claims, and, and again, you know, they also have the right to challenge the decision of the council in court.
Any questions for staff or for legal counsel? Lori?
Could you talk to us a little bit about the C conditional use number six?
Yeah, so what staff is asking you to do is basically to add a 30-day provision to that condition, so it's an amendment to that condition. Yes, the condition exists that they have to agree to the conditions before issuance of a building permit. The new condition that staff is asking you to consider today is to put a 30-day timeline for the applicant to agree or not agree. Basically, it's for the applicant to agree. And again, you know, the conditions that would be subject to challenge, they've known since at least March 6th.
And it is to Amber's presentation requirement that, this is basically an administrative oversight. It appears in every similar document by a similar applicant in the city's track record.
Well, I can tell you that I represent other cities as well, and it is a standard condition in many land use approvals. You know, again, normally, when you have land use entitlements, you're granting a benefit, I think you should decide whether you're going to accept the benefit or whether you're going to challenge it. And normally, because time is money, especially for commercial development, you want the resolution upfront really quickly rather than let it linger for years and years.
Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, just, I just want to confirm with you, we're not reinventing the wheel and reopening this to go over everything regarding signs and illumination and numbers and locations. What we've done here is brought it back because of an item that told the applicant, here, we've approved it, we just want you to agree that you're accepting this within 30 days. That's the only reason why we've got this on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, that is what staff is presenting to you and asking you to take action on. The municipal code does allow you to reconsider the whole approval, but you actually don't have the full record unless you have really good memory. So the record you have before you is simply related to the 30-day condition.
There was a comment made, we're just asking questions at this time, right?
You have just, no, we've closed the public hearing.
Okay.
So we can, you know, this is for Amber and for...
Okay, great. This could be for staff. I heard that in the contract, or in the conditions of approval, there's already a term for acceptance when it must occur. And so my question is, if we didn't have this standard approval that we have in every single condition of approval, what is that term for acceptance?
You know, I'll defer to legal counsel on that one for standard state requirements.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, for...
I'm sorry.
It's okay. First, so the standard, the standard limitation period for challenging a land use entitlement is 90 days. You know, it's short to begin with. It's not your typical one-year, two-year statute of limitations. It's normally 90 days. It's shorter for other land use entitlements or land use actions. For example, environmental review is 30 days. For challenge of fees, it's 60 days. You know, development impact fees imposed is 60 days. So really, the difference we're talking about here today is between 90 and 30 days, but even if you were to agree to it the 30 days, you're actually getting more than 30 days because they've known these conditions since March 6th.
So do you believe that's what the applicant was referring to when they said there's already a term for acceptance? There isn't like a separate, that's what I want to know, if there's a separate part in here that says already?
Yeah, so there is a condition six to the conditions of approval that say that the...
Read it into the mic.
So there is a condition six that was approved in March 6th that indicates that prior to issuance of building permits, the owner or designee shall submit written consent to all of the imposed conditions to the community development director. And really, again, the request is to put a 30-day limit within which they submit that written consent to the conditions.
Amber, do you have input on that question?
No, I would just defer that Mr. Sandevall is completely correct.
I would just make the statement that, obviously, I was more for a middle-of-the-road solution to this. I wish council would reconsider and pick the superior option that was in the EIR. We always could pick less. But I understand, I think we have to have three? It would have to be a 3-1 vote for us tonight to do that, because Chris Hamm's not here, correct? I'm asking the mayor. There's only four of us, so what happens if there's a 2-2 vote, or what happens to the...
Yeah, so 2-2 vote is basically non-action, you need a majority approval or any action tonight.
Okay, so I wanted to point that out, that we don't have that tonight. Just make that abundantly clear. I also heard comments that we voted favorably for the outlet mall on March 6th. Also, a question of, don't change anything, give them the signage. So my comment would be, if we did vote favorably to that, and it's the outlet mall, they're here and asking for us not to change that approval, that they should, they should accept it within 30 days, which they've already had an extra time period. So I'm going to be for giving them the standard 30-day approval. If we did vote favorably for them, even though that was not my choice in the matter, this is, we're not really shortening the time period, it's a condition of approval. And so they should accept it if they really want signs and time was of the essence and they need them for letting people know they're here, 30 days is appropriate.
Just like to add to the conversation just one little bit is, if the outlet mall was so happy with our decision on March 6th, they wouldn't have filed two or three other lawsuits after that against us. So I somehow don't think that they're really thrilled with what we did on March 6th.
I think everyone's mad all the time.
That's why you're mayor. You got that?
It's super fun, by the way.
All right, since this isn't a very specific scalpel issue rather than an open-heart surgery issue, I move that we adopt Resolution 1814 entitled a resolution to the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, approving the amendment to the discretionary sign permit, 05176 DSP, and sign exception permit 15-423, a request to amend a previously approved master plan program to allow freeway-oriented signs for the outlets at San Clemente located at 101 West Avenida Vista Hermosa.
Second.
So we got a motion by Doncheck and a second by Schwartz. Before we vote on this item, though, any other comments, Lori, on deliberation?
No, my only comment is I really hope we can move to a partnership mode really soon because all the comments that were made about the jobs that the, that the outlet malls provide, their role in the community, which they touch, you know, many, many places in the community, I just really hope we can get to a place where we're pulling together rather than in warrior mode.
I think my only comments will be, I've got dear friends who, who have, you know, spoken to me about this issue. I have other folks who have spent time, you know, trying to, you know, position the other side of this question. You know, in many ways, I feel like we've, we've presented an option that is best manages that balance as possible. And, you know, I will be supporting this amended condition approval with the hope and expectation that everyone can be deeply unhappy with the outcome and just move forward. So with that, we have a motion by Doncheck, a second by Schwartz, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you, Omar.
Can we ask the techni, before you step down, the minutes from the...
30 days.
Pardon?
Are the minutes being pulled off the calendar? Can we discuss now? Because I'd like to comment to it if we're going to discuss it in the room floor.
Brad, if you could sit down, we'll open it up to Paul again.
We're being rushed.
Brad, Brad, if you could please sit down. We're going to ask a question of our attorneys, get to them when you need to. So we're done with this item, right? We're moving on to the consent calendar, but prior to moving on to consent calendar, I believe we have a question for our attorney, which is entirely proper.
And I hope to be able to ask my question without interruptions. All right, so we have some minutes that have to do with the issue that we just deliberated on. My interpretation of minutes is that they simply institutionalize actions that took place in a time certain, and they are what they are, and anything that happened tonight has no bearing on those minutes because they are basically focused on a point in time where certain actions occurred. So are we in a position to be able to approve the minutes from the meeting where the outlet malls was agendized, or do we need to pull that out and bring that to a further meeting? Do you understand my question?
Yes, I understand your question, and I agree with you that they record what occurred at that point in time. If there is any revisions to the minutes, you know, normally, you know, the city clerk attests to the minutes as being a recording of what occurred at that time, but the city council always has the option to clarify items. For example, you have action plus minutes, you don't have verbatim minutes, and you have the option, that's why it's on the agenda, to ask that additional information from that meeting be included on the record of, recorded in the minutes. In this particular case, I'm not sure that you want to add or subtract to the minutes as they were presented. If there is any change or any reference for purposes of clarification, maybe a parenthesis indicating that the approvals, the conditions of approval March 6th were amended at this meeting tonight.
So we could add that to the...
You could add that.
Either...
But it, but it's not, it's not to record what occurred on March 6th, but what, a notation that the resolution of that on March 6th was amended or added to on today's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
We can go ahead.
Okay. First, could we have a motion of way of reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Motion by Ward, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0.
Close session report. City Attorney.
Did you just skip item 6A for public comment?
No, we have not.
Did you do it, Carl? Okay, we're not there yet.
All right, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, prior to you speaking, so, let's go ahead and establish the protocol here. I don't want to entertain questions anymore from the floor. Brad, and any of you folks, you want to come up and chip away with comments and interrupt the meeting? It absolutely can't happen anymore. It's disruptive. It is disruptive.
It is.
It is disruptive and disrespectful. And if you continue to do with that, I will ask you to leave the meeting. Please stop, right? We could not be more respectful. We're just trying to do the best we can. Please give us the room to do so. Excuse me, sorry.
All right, thanks, Mayor. The council did have the following report from closed session. With regard to the item of litigation, the San Clemente Vacation Rental Alliance, the city council considered and approved a settlement agreement in that case with the motion made by Councilmember Doncheck, seconded by Mayor Brown. And that agreement was approved on a 4-0 vote with the exception of Exhibit C to the agreement, which was approved by a separate vote. That property, or excuse me, that exhibit lists some properties who have requested special amortization extension as part of the settlement. There are 19 properties on there. Two of those properties, 115 Trafalgar Lane, 135 Avenue of Barcelona, are within 500 feet of Mayor Brown's property. So, the mayor recused himself from that part of the vote. And the motion there was made by Councilmember Schwartz, seconded by Councilmember Doncheck, and passed 3 to 0 with Mayor Brown abstaining and recusing himself from the closed session. The remainder of that exhibit, Exhibit C to the settlement, was approved with all council members, all four voting in favor of that the motion to approve that part of Exhibit C was made by Brown, seconded by Schwartz. The closed session relating to the cases that were mentioned earlier, Villa San Clemente, as I mentioned earlier, involved our firm previously, so I recused myself from participation in that discussion. Special Counsel Alan Burns participated in that discussion. If I can add while I'm here, that's exactly what happened at your last closed session, your last council meeting, that item, those items were noticed on closed session, and those cases were discussed in communication with Mr. Burns. And so, I want to, while I'm at it, clarify that for the record. So, that's our closed session report for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott on those items? Okay, great. Thank you.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. Public has requested the removal of Item 6A.
Okay, as to be expected. Do we have any other items?
No.
Nothing?
I would pull 6A3, number 3.
6A3.
Are we pulling the whole 6A stuff?
Well, it's, is it a different item within 6A that you're looking to address other than the meeting minutes?
It's the different minutes of a different meeting. We had like three different sets.
Okay, all right. So, and yours were relating to which part of that without having to look at it?
Mine were relating to conditions we put on leaf blowers.
Conditions on...
I want those, I think we need to clarify them for staff.
Okay.
Then I'll pull 6A2.
And you're pulling 6A on the, on the...
Number 2.
6A, oh, 6A2, not as, okay, sorry.
Number 2.
Yeah, 6A2. And yours was regarding...
I just want to add.
I'm interested in adding the parenthetical statement.
So, the staff, okay, so, public has pulled 6A, and then specifically you're pulling 6A.
We don't know what the public pulled, but I'm in case it wasn't too, that's...
Okay. Steve?
I'm fine.
All right, I am also going to pass on that item.
I'll make a motion to move the balance.
I'll second.
Motion, move the balance. Councilman Ward made the motion. Councilman Schwartz made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. So, we will start with Item 6A, which was pulled by the public and Councilwoman Doncheck. First, we have Brad Malamud, and second, we have Richard Boyer. Brad?
Mayor, I'm going to sub out again with Mr. Sandoval.
Of course. I think you should sit in because you were there when you made the decision on this two weeks ago. We'll do what we do. Tim, I mean no disrespect. It's difficult for us outside. We have under Robert's Rules of Order the right to raise points of order. If you read Robert's Rules of Order, that's what this council's under. But I mean no disrespect in the interruptions, as you call them. Two weeks ago, this council voted to move into closed session with Mr. Smith and Mr. Matchinoff present. As we said earlier, and the city attorney said we were wrong, or at least didn't address it, you cannot go into closed session during a hearing. There's not 72 hours' notice. There was no emergency notice on this item. There was no emergency discussion. There was no code section under which you went into closed section given. The meeting was outright illegal and a pure Brown Act violation. And the city attorney will probably address that when I'm done. But therefore, the actions taken tainted what you did tonight. Tonight, what you did now, and you did that for one reason only, because if those minutes had been approved, then you couldn't have had the action you took earlier, and that's why you moved 7A out of order. It's really interesting that, from what I can tell, in the last 12 years, maybe 16 years, no council's ever taken minutes and delayed their approval so they could take other actions. It's outrageous if you do this. And it also means that if you do that, that applicants, every applicant has to come back to this council every time you move to approve minutes, to approve minutes on a consent calendar, because if you delay them, it affects their decision, and now you can move to reconsider. Further, since the action of the staff was already telling you you were going to reconsider, it should never have been on the consent calendar. If you were going to take objections, you had an absolute legal obligation to move it on to the new calendar. And as far as earlier tonight, the move by Ms. Ward, Councilman Ward, to move Item 7A and therefore approve the code section you talked about, city attorney, that had to be 72-hour notice to head. She can't do it at the meeting. She didn't move that item. The staff did. And with all due respect, I just have to disagree with you on your conclusion, and I think a higher authority will find that I'm right. But that's, but this item, I think you should vote to deem it approved two weeks ago because that closed session meeting was illegal. And Mr. Smith participated in that decision, and so, if it has to do with the Item 7A, he had no legal right as being in a position not to involve in the outlet's decision-making to have allowed that decision to go on. And if he was allowed to make that decision at the time, he knows darn well you can't call a closed session meeting during a council session. It was outrageous what happened two weeks ago. It's outrageous what happened tonight, and I think the council members need better guidance from both city attorneys, or at least we believe they have to enforce the laws written, not as they would like it to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Boyer?
My apologies again. I regret disrupting the meeting. Apologies especially to Joanne. I know how hard that must be to do what you do, and I appreciate it. My sole purpose was to make sure I didn't miss my opportunity to make a clarification of the meeting minutes, which state that I said that our group had sued the city three times. That was not the case. It was, it took a year and a day. We met the city in court three times. The first time was because of a motion from the developer to dismiss our suit. He claimed that we did not have standing before the court. The court differed. The second was the trial. Residents prevailed. And the third was fees and costs, which we recovered in full because we provided a substantial benefit to the public, and we've vindicated an important right. So, it may have felt like three lawsuits, but it was just one. We met the city three times, city and real party, the developer, who was really behind all of it. And I just wanted to make sure that the meeting minutes reflect that. We did not sue the city three times. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item?
Okay, and I was meaning to pull 6A1. So, we haven't approved 6 at all, so that's, I'm just clarifying. Okay. Yeah, okay. And so, at the suggestion of council, what I'd like to do is get these minutes approved. However, on page 16, and I'm going to ask the city clerk for direction, I'd like to at the bottom of Item 7, which was the outlet mall's signed deliberation, add in parentheses language that would say, that would direct a reader to tonight's meeting, which is April 17, and the appropriate item number for tonight. And with that, I would, we'll just move all of 6 at once, but, so, but I'd like to make that revision to the minutes, and I guess I need a second for that.
I second.
Okay.
Will that suffice?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, we can approve these minutes tonight?
Yeah, so, you can approve the minutes with that revision.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Doncheck with the addition of those notes. Any questions about that? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? You have a question?
I thought we were going to, we're either going to do all the sets of minutes and then take a vote, or...
No, this is, this is just a vote on the amendment.
Thank you.
Yes, not on approval.
With the addition. Passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that was 6A1. And then, I'll let it lie for nothing, okay. Just, you know, I'll let it lie. And then, the other item for you, Kathy, was 6A3.
Okay. I would direct your attention to page 13 of 6A.
Thank you, Omar.
Thank you, Omar.
Is number 13, page 13?
These are comments that we made when we were talking about agendizing leaf blowers and sending it to the planning commission. And my concern is, at the last paragraph before the bullet points, it actually says, "Specific directions were provided as follows." And so, we are telling our staff, do every single one of these bullet points. And I think there's a few of them that were actually comments and not direction, and our staff has enough to do that we don't need them doing some of these things that we commented on if we all agree on it tonight. The first one that I'm not sure about, and I'm asking for clarification, is number two. City is to immediately switch to leaf blowers from leaf blowers to electric blowers. Did we say that?
No.
I think we said...
We can contemplate the question.
When we decided, we should be a good steward. Okay, so, I think that one should come out. Are we, okay. And then...
Or how about city might explore?
I think...
I think that will be in the staff report.
I think it's, well, if you look at it, we were going to review other cities' ordinances, which really hit those impacts.
I think your bigger issue is, we don't want to bias the discussion, so...
No, but I'm just, anyway, it's just odd when it says, "We'll immediately do this," and yet, we haven't voted on it yet. So, that's kind of, you know, that's something we commented on, but I don't think it was a direction.
I think the rest of these are fine. They're just consider and contemplate and review and determine.
My, well, but then, the 1, 2, 3, fourth one talks about decibel levels. That should not be in there. We already have a noise ordinance that applies to these. It just doesn't spell them out. We don't really care about decibel levels. That means our staff has to do all of this stuff in the staff report.
Well, I think the key was, is what Tim brought up, is that we're talking about reviewing what other cities have in their ordinances regarding that.
Yeah, but I do like the idea of pulling, and it's right, of pulling that out primarily because if it's something that we already are contemplating, or there's another ordinance governing it, let's not.
Are we going to really put a meter up? No.
We're probably, we're probably going to see that anyway, because we're asking for to look at what other cities are doing so we can get the input from what they're, they've done and have been able to accomplish. So, it's probably going to be in theirs anyway, so we don't have to determine that upfront.
I don't think it will, because we're going beyond the noise ordinance and actually trying to name something so that it's clear.
I know, but I'm just saying that their ordinances may include a decibel level where...
They might, I don't remember that.
Yeah, well, and I'd like to weigh in on that, they do. And it's one of the things when you're purchasing equipments, it's one of the criteria by which you would choose what kind of equipment, leaf blower, to purchase. So, I'd like to leave it in. Also, having gone through the safety quiet zone with the trains, it's really instructive to get a sense of just how noisy these things are, but mainly as a purchase criteria, it's a standard.
Okay. I'm just remembering my hours spent on the planning commission, talking about decibels, and you wanted to...
I think if you remove decibel levels and remove that immediately, switch.
Well, the only other thing I have is the last, second to the last comment, city to consider relative impacts of leaf blowers in comparison to other pollutants. I think that was a comment, that wasn't a direction. Please tell me it wasn't, because how can our staff do that?
Yeah, we could take that out. Good catch.
All right. Well, it's just because it said these were specific directions, and I didn't want to let that go on staff. Oh, wait, and the last one, city to determine whether California is subject to a different set of emission standards than other states. Is that, does that matter?
That's nothing we should be doing.
No, I think that we were talking and, you know, things were taken down. Okay, so, that's my end of the...
We already are. Everything has to be CARB compliant.
So, is your, you're going to make a motion of removing those three items?
With those changes, so that staff doesn't think they have to do that?
Yeah.
Well, it's 2 and then remove decibel levels, and then 8, 9.
No, one lead decibel.
Oh, yeah, they have, okay, all right.
But get rid of the impact to the freeway pollutants and state of California.
Bullet 2, 8 and 9 removed.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll move that.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ward, second by Doncheck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0.
And now, I move Item 6. I move that we approve Item 6.
Item, Item 6A?
6, the whole nine yards.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah. But we didn't pull 8.
We approved 6, 1.
Didn't we approve the balance already?
Yeah, okay, the public pulled 6, so even though we were splicing 6 into different...
Public pulled 6A.
No.
They pulled 6, did they not?
They just put down all of 6A.
6A.
They pulled it all.
All of 6A.
Why don't you, we already have the one motion.
I'm sorry, 6A?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve Item 6A in its entirety.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Schwartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Okay, so, it's 8:30, and we've got through the consent calendar. I feel like we're hitting home runs. Should we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Do we have the general plan progress report? We have a lot of, we have a lot of common cards.
Okay.
9. Let's just take a five-minute break real quick. Folks, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be right back. Let's reconvene at 8:35. I'm telling them, but really, it's for us, that, you know...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Unless it is surrendered, and we'll never let that happen. Unfortunately overdoses linked to prescription opioids like Vicodin, Oxycon, Morphine seem to be more concentrated in affluent parts of the county and among older people. Meanwhile heroin overdoses are more common in Central and North Orange County as well as among younger people. We still live in a dystopia where many white business people have never experienced the sort of deprivation and result of lack of dignity that people of color in America experience. We will fight to preserve the dignity of our millions of workers, white collar, blue collar, or no collar. This leads me to the second pillar, equality. We live in a nation where daily there are pervasive examples of inequality, inequality of equality, sorry. It was not long ago that the city of San Clemente banned cannabis businesses. Much has changed in our state and our country and the efficacy of cannabis. Eight states have legalized recreational use of cannabis, including California. Over 29 states have legalized medical use of cannabis, including Washington DC. Both Canada and Germany both use in their national healthcare systems and the world demand for cannabis and cannabis products are postured to grow in exponential proportions. Who here believes that the FDA has put in the last, has put you first in the last 10 years? We need a government that puts people first with competence, compassion, foresight, discipline, integrity to implement policies that will help create opportunities and not one that will kill business with poor policies, procedures and practices and lifetime of incompetence. And lastly, the third pillar is opportunity. We are not repeating the lines of so many other corrupt politicians, corrupt labor leaders and corrupt business people who endlessly promised to create jobs. Transitioning veterans want to work. In Orange County, more than 40K veterans traverse the civilian ecosystem each year. Southern California is home to the largest demographic of veterans nationally. Investment behavior thus far seems to indicate that firms expect to see the greatest returns in fields like specialized logistics, technologies, finance, media, supporting the cannabis industry. What we want, what we together must do is end the inequality of opportunity by creating conditions for opportunities to work. Yes, opportunities like jobs for everyone, blue collar, white collar, women and men, employed and unemployed. I would like to close by sharing with you a very personal and intimate hope. As the state and federal lawmakers debate the country's cannabis policies and California rules and the ever-expanding cannabis economy, let's hope that they remember that unnecessary regulations stifle growth while doing nothing for the public safety or health. Above all on this day, we wish to express our renewed faith in our community, our confident belief that in an out, in an ounce, in its outstanding industry, industry is hardworking and decent people and that our community shall have a future because it is, because it is we who will ensure that future. A parting thought, our destiny is not a matter of chance, it's a matter of choice, your choice, our choice. Thank you for your hospitality, your generosity, and thank you for hosting us.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. So next is Christopher Lendenowski.
Lendenowski, thank you.
Sorry about that. And then following Mr. Lendenowski is Jeremy Greenfield.
Ready, Mayor?
Oh, I'm always ready, sir.
No, you were looking down. I come from the Marine Corps, okay? 10 years it taught me that I want to get people's attention, I want to look them in the eye when I'm talking to them, know exactly what we're talking about.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so 10 years in the Marine Corps, I went around the world three times. I chased pirates, I went to Iraq, and I went to Somalia. When I got done from my 10 years of service, I was graciously presented a medical discharge, a letter from President Obama, thank you for my service, and a bag of 18 different pharmaceutical pills a day to take. Eighteen pills a day, okay? If I used them in responsibility, I would not be here right now because I'd be dead. I'm a father of four children, I'm a man of my country, I love the area that I live in. Do I live in San Clemente? I hate to say this, but no, I don't. I live four exits away in San Juan Capistrano. My fight is not with any individual city, it's with Orange County as a whole. I am being denied as a responsible individual the ability to safe access. I don't care what city it's in. I literally have to impose myself into almost reminding myself of the streets of Fallujah to drive into bad cities that were bad cities before cannabis ever got into them. If you're a good city with responsibility and responsible action, you can set the example of what that's supposed to look like and why. That's all I'm here to say. I thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Jeremy Greenfield?
Following Mr. Greenfield is Gary Hedrick.
Thank you, council members, and Mr. Brown. My name is Jeremy. I've been a resident of San Clemente for over 10 years. Upon graduating from UC Irvine with a bachelor's degree in international studies, I started my own sales and marketing company specializing in consumer electronics. After an influx of foreign competitors in the, in the electronics industry, I elected to take my sales and marketing experience and combine that with my passion for another up-and-coming industry. I launched a medical cannabis delivery service. My goal when entering the legal cannabis industry was and still is to break the stigma of cannabis as a CD business. That's why we have already established delivery best practices such as strict background checks for all employees, GPS tracking for drivers, real-time inventory tracking, as well as multi-layered verification to ensure all patients are who they say they are. Our transactions take place behind closed doors, there's no vehicular advertising whatsoever. Exposure to this, to the public at large is extremely limited. As you are aware, with the passage of Proposition 64 came the requirement to obtain local approval. This is before one can even apply for a temporary state license. You'll see and hear story after story on the news about black market cannabis businesses undercutting the newly created recreational market. But what does not capture the headlines is that these businesses have not been provided with a realistic path towards legalization. Because of the actions of city councils across the state, including this one, there is no path forward for these business owners. I implore the city council, take action, enact the will of the people. As an operator of a medical cannabis delivery service operating legally under California Proposition 215 and Senate Bill 420, I have done quite literally everything that I can possibly do to remain legal. Now, because only less than 30% of California cities have become, begun issuing licenses, I, as well as a multitude of other upstanding business owners, are at risk of being cast into a newly created black market. There are currently over 20 different cannabis delivery services operating within San Clemente city limits, many of which claim to be locally owned and operated despite the city's current ordinances. All I ask is that you consider issuing these businesses, which are already operating in the city, licenses, thus opening the door to collecting the hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of tax dollars not currently being collected. In addition, this opens the door to regulation, ensuring that illicit operators, who are not the upstanding business people you see before you today, are out of the industry forever, black market or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next is Gary Hedrick. Following Gary is Adrian Marks.
Good evening, council. Gary Hedrick, representing San Clemente Green. And first I'd like to start by thanking Commissioner Schwartz for attending and participating so well in our community engagement panel. It was a very interesting meeting and a lot was disclosed. I think it's pretty well-known in the news lately that the first forecasters that were loaded at Santa Ofre were, were faulty or were not sure exactly what the condition is. The fact that these casters were faulty even before they were loaded doesn't say much for the quality assurance control, what we're experiencing with Holtech. So that was the first red flag. And then Tom Palmisano presented the fact that we can't undo those four casters that have been loaded already because the, it's never been done before. So we discovered by accident that these four casters must remain intact, they can never be reloaded until, you know, at some point in the future when they invent a way to reload. And the fact is that there's other ways that casters could need immediate attention, like if they tip over on the trailer that's carrying it from the pools to the silos, or if it was to fall from a crane while it's in the pool. There could be any number of accidents and it was, you know, abundantly clear that we have no options to respond to an accident like that if there was a damaged canister. But he did go on to say that, well, there, as another option, we could use a dry canister in a hot cell, which is instead of reintroducing it into water, you could use a dry cell facility, a hot cell facility. And it sounded like it made good sense, at least we had another option. But first you would have to take that damaged cell or container, transport it in some, some manner of speaking, and then take it to what, what the report that they rely on so heavily is. This consultant, NPR, gave Edison the, Edison had the information from NPR, their consultant, said, "The DOE recently identified a large existing hot cell facility, Test Area North, on the Idaho National Laboratory that could be dedicated to repackage commercial used fuel casters." Well, that sounds great, but why I'm here tonight is to let you know and the public know that that facility they referred to in September 2017 was actually destroyed on October 12th in 2007. I saw videos of it being exploded, seven-foot-thick walls that were destroyed, and we can never use that facility. So we're, we have no protection, and I just want you to know that so we can make the right decisions and really understand where we are in this community with the nuclear waste issue. So that's the update.
Thank you, Gary. Adrian Marks?
Boy, it's been a long night. Our city's mission statement talks about maintaining a safe, healthy atmosphere in which we can all live, work, and play. And community safety encompasses a lot of things. It involves a collaborative effort between all of you, between the Sheriff's Department, and between us as residents. And I have to say, sitting here tonight, I don't envy the heavy load that you guys have to deal with, with these hot topic safety issues that are affecting us from the nuclear waste down the street, the toll road and the pollution that it will bring to us, the sober living homes and people not being able to enjoy their own backyards because of what's going on next to them. And, you know, of course, the homeless situation and the rise in crime that we've seen as a result of that. And many residents tonight have already shared, you know, in photos and verbally their concerns about what's happening in our city and how much it has changed recently with the influx of these new people who have their own way of living and not abiding by the law and openly doing drugs. And I just want to say that I, from many aspects in the media, and it seems like we're being shamed for not being okay with what's being forced in our cities. And it costs the police and taxpayers thousands and thousands of dollars to clean up the messes that these people make and leave behind, to clean up the defecation, the urine, the needles that have been used. And many of them don't even want the help. We saw Ava presented something about somebody who was interviewed and, hey, why should he get the help? Because he can just continue to live the way he lives. And, you know, there's many city councils that are stepping up and being very vocal about these issues, and, you know, we just really, really need that from all of you up here. You guys live here too, and you're probably sick of hearing us talk about it, but it's an important issue. It's a safety concern for many of us, and we really need it to be addressed. The other big topic is that the city has not opted out of the sanctuary state issues. I did send an email request asking that it be put on the agenda for the May 1st meeting, that you guys would oppose the SB 54. On a side note, totally off-topic, one of the reasons why I moved here was because San Clemente is a beautiful place. There was not a lot of commercial paper here, a big support for mom-and-pop businesses. Now I get to look at the Target sign from my backyard, which drives me nuts, and I just want to say I am opposed to ugly signs off the freeway with the outlets. Thank you for your service. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. So I had cards, you know, I had Lou Avera here in recognition of Susan.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. What are you doing back there? I thought you left.
It lasted for a while.
Well, your card's left. Oh, I thought, sorry Lou, I got you on there. And then we have Paul Buck and Sabrina Landry. All right. Neither, either of those folks here?
Yes, I'm gonna change my seat next time.
You're it.
I'm it, huh? Well, good, okay, this is appropriate. I, I, what I wanted to do here tonight was recognize Susan, and by the way, this is not about the outlet mall, this is about San Clemente and what we are. I wanted to recognize Susan Genrich tonight because she has been nominated in the, today's issue of the Orange County Business Journal as woman, for the Woman of the Year Award to be awarded in May. Last year, Berenika Smith from the Casa Romanica was nominated for this, and she didn't win it last year, but she was one of the nominations for last year. But Susan has been nominated for it this year. Her picture and a write-up about her is in the Orange County Business Journal today, very nice write-up. And Susan, as we, as we know, she's scheduled to be the president of the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce beginning in 2019 at some point. So I think what this is all about is the contribution that she individually and personally has made to our city, in the community things she's been involved in recently, and the other things that they, that they've done at the outlet mall in terms of hosting events and things like that. So again, I just wanted to recognize her, having seen this. I think it's a great honor for, for her, and it's a great honor and testament to San Clemente. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Susan.
When's the event?
I'm not sure, Lori. It's in the Business Journal, it's sometime in May, you know Susan?
Good luck, Susan.
Congratulations.
Okay, it's that time of year when you interview and make appointments to commissions and committees for the expiring terms. So I agendized this to give you the opportunity to establish two meeting dates. Usually you do that in June because the terms expire June 30th for interviews.
Positions expire June 30th, so I guess we need some dates in June.
Yes, you'll probably, you've always needed two in the past.
All I, all I request is that we somehow don't do it the third week, which is 17 through the 23rd.
How about the 12th and the 13th?
12th through the 15th.
12th through the 15th?
Yeah.
The 12th, Chris Ham is scheduled to work. He's free the 13th. He's free the 14th.
14th is Flag Day, that's about the only.
Oh, yeah, so 13th, 14th.
13th and 14th, yes.
I would like to make a suggestion. If you look, June 1st is a Friday, and usually the last week of the month, there isn't as many meetings for all of us. Would it be easier to try to do it? Oh, wait, is that Memorial Day? The 30th? Wait, when's Memorial Day?
31st.
It's not marked on my calendar. But Wednesday and Thursday is 31st.
Memorial Day is the 28th.
Okay. So it's not Memorial Day. I'm just making a suggestion.
Well, how about 13th, 14th?
The last week is usually easy. But the middle of the month, you know, we're all pretty busy.
Yeah, but back-to-back, I would like to do back-to-back instead of one, and then a later weekend or a few days, and then do another. We have a council meeting.
On the 11th. And we also have a joint meeting of the TCA on the 14th, I would remind you.
We have a council meeting on the 11th?
No, we don't, we have it on the, on June 5th.
Oh, we have council, yeah.
I see, council meeting June 5th.
Yeah. No, 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 council meeting is...
June 5th, and we have no...
June 5th and 19th.
June 7th.
14th and 19th.
Why do I have a council meeting on June 7th?
Oh, we do.
Are you in 2010?
It's June 7th because June 5th is the primary, and they're using the chambers. So yes, council meets the 7th.
And I don't think I'll be here for that meeting. I'm looking at my calendar right now.
Maybe we should skip it.
You need to...
You're reappointed.
Okay, so let's, let's stay focused here. So Kathy, can you not do the 13th, 14th?
I would, I can. It's just, I have a TCA meeting on the 14th, and that can go any amount of time, but...
I don't have that question.
You need to put that on your calendar. So I can. I, I was just making a comment that, you know, the middle of the month is, especially for the mayor, is pretty busy.
I'm fine with the 13th and 14th. If that's what, if Chris is available, it is, where am I at here? I'm on a different...
I like to accommodate Kathy, but I think this...
No, it's just a comment.
Yeah, 13th and 14th.
Is it, are those okay dates with you?
Yeah.
Long week, another long week.
Well, that's, the only benefit is we don't have a council meeting that week. So we have it on Thursday previous and 13th and 14th, we could wrap it up. 13th and 14th, starting at what time would be best?
I think you, we're five?
Four would be good.
I think probably, I think five.
Five?
I think five allows people to get here. Maybe 4:30.
Sure, there we go.
4:30.
4:30.
And we'll, you know, we'll go from there.
Do you have Councilmember Ham's schedule to, well, to know if he's going to be here on June 7th? Because if we don't have the mayor, and we don't have the mayor pro temp, maybe we should not have a meeting.
We should the next Tuesday.
I don't think he works. It's got, this is the OCFA schedule, and it's got little dots all over the 7th. It's some sort of a code that I can't seem to break here.
Can we push the council meeting to the next Tuesday?
OCFA, you know?
Then we'd be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
What's that mean? It's not green.
They don't want to put it on two pages so it's larger, you know? Put it all in one.
It's shift C, right?
Yeah, have, have a man who knows what he's actually doing with that thing.
Oh, he's putting it up all night.
Chris.
If we could move that meeting, though, would be great.
Or just cancel it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for that.
The meetings in June are weird for me.
I'm just thinking of all this overtime date we get, you know, to do all these other meetings.
It's a sensitive subject, please.
Pulling up the schedule. It's a good thing we have the right man.
We can address that, we can address the 7th at another date, we can turn around and just do this, right?
You can. Hopefully if you are going to schedule or cancel that meeting, find out fairly soon because staff plans around that. So, but no, you don't have to do it today.
You may not be here for the first meeting?
I will not.
Seven.
Because we have budget, we also have to adopt. So if you're not here for the first meeting of June, or if you're at the second meeting of June...
Well, I don't, how does it look if we were to move that council meeting to that Tuesday, the 12th?
Oh, goodie.
I mean, that puts us three meetings in a row, but we can, we can knock it out.
I'm okay.
For June 7th?
What do you think, Lori?
He's not scheduled. He's not scheduled.
He's not scheduled. Why don't we move the council meeting to the 12th of June, and then we'll do the interviews on 13th and 14th? Well, it's a lot of heavy lifting, but I think we'll accomplish a lot.
So that means Kathy and I have to...
But I have OCCA, I have the 11th, so we can come out here.
Yes.
He works on the 12th, so I won't be under the budget.
That's okay, that's okay. We can, we can do that with four of us.
We're used to it.
Okay, so we're moving council to the 12th.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So, city manager?
No.
City attorney?
Nothing more tonight, thanks.
Council members?
Lori?
So, some residents asked me to attend the OC Clean Power Summit at UC Irvine on April 11th, and this is about community choice energy, and it was really well-attended. There were cities from as far south as Carlsbad up to Buena Park. And what I'd like to do, what this is all about basically is shifting the paradigm of how different jurisdictions consume energy. And in fact, one of the better speakers was the BBK, the lawyer from BBK, who I was going to tell you his name, Scott. Let's see. I will, well, I will find it for you.
He knows who he is.
Oh, he knows who he is? Okay, well, I thought we could give him a shout-out. But anyway, what I'd like to do, so the benefits of this, it's, the Speaker of the House, Kevin DeLeone, was there and was talking about a world where Hawaii plans to be 100% renewable energy by the year 2035, and that our state already is 20% and moving aggressively toward 50%. So what I would like to do is ask staff to set up a meeting, I'd like to attend it with Solana Beach, because they have created a CCE, it's up and running, it's an enterprise fund, and what the benefits of this model is, A, you get to pick what your energy is. So if you wanted to go 100% renewables, if that was the will of your community, you could do it. But as importantly, it's an economic development engine because it's generally cheaper, and communities like Laguna Beach are looking at the delta, the difference between the single utility model and the CCE model, to fund their undergrounding of all their utilities in Laguna Beach. So they've actually done a feasibility study. So all I want, my ask is small, I just would like to have someone from staff identified, and I'd like to meet in Solana Beach with whoever our counterparts would be, and I'd also like to invite another council member, if anyone's interested. And just to put it in perspective, I could have, under Item J, one of our strategic implementation program medium priority items is, quote, "Research Opportunities for Power Purchase Agreements and Sustainable Community Programs for Renewable Power on City Facilities." So this is in the mix as a general plan implementation idea. So I'm very enthusiastic about it and am interested that another beach city down the way is already doing it. So could I make that request to the city manager? I'd like to do it maybe in the next two months at your convenience. And would anybody else like to go?
I'd go.
Okay, yeah, that would be great because you'll, you'll be here after I'm gone.
I can also back you up on that, just, you know, besides the fact I have solar on my house, I'm involved with probably two dozen solar contractors across the country, a lot of them in Hawaii, so I'm very familiar with the installs and the plants.
So it was Ryan Baron from BBK. Yeah, and so the first step evidently is you ask for a feasibility study and a pro forma. And the feasibility study tells you whether it's plausible for your community or not, and then what the pro forma, which is the piece I'd like to see, it shows you what the financial advantages are. And it's not a clear path. The utilities obviously have a little bit of resistance and, but it's moving at a far more vigorous speed than I ever imagined, so that is my comment.
Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, because some, there was comments made during the public input or communications. One was on, I gave a report last meeting on the CEP that was brought up again tonight, where they talked about there were small pins that were broken. And I said, yeah, and there's four that have been sealed and there is an issue with them, but all the 50 whatever that they purchased, the manufacturer's has owned up to being their problem, they're replacing them, they're taking care of it. And should those four have to be taken care of, we would expect that the manufacturer's going to be the one that's going to be dealing with that. In addition to that, I thought we came away with a huge win, and that was the fact that Southern California Edison agreed to do 24/7 monitoring on-site with public access to the monitoring as far as radiation goes. So I thought we got some good wins out of that CEP, it was very interesting. On the cannabis issue, this council voted, and I agreed with them, to not allow it to sell inside of our city. The only reason I voted yes on that was because the fact of the, it's a violation of federal law, and that it would put our places at risk that can't bank their deposits in local banks. And as long as we're talking about having people around our town having to go with large amounts of cash, it's, I think it's, basically we're trolling for trouble. So when I see that we are not, they can actually bank their money, then I would, I would be behind coming up with some regulation to control and tax the product.
Kathy?
I represent the city council on the water boards, and I wanted to talk a little bit about Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. They're the ones that import most of our water and hold it and... I represent the city council on the water boards. And I wanted to talk a little bit about Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. They're the ones that import most of our water and hold it and provide it for all of LA County, Orange County, Riverside, San Bernardino. I think there's one more in there, some desert community. Can't remember who it is. There's something called the California Water Fix. If you remember, it's been talked about for a while. And something about the Delta smelt, which is a small fish. And a lot of our water, we have portable water that comes into San Clemente. The Delta smelt was endangered, and most of our water was not coming to Southern California. It was going into the ocean in San Francisco Bay. So there was supposed to be two tunnels for the Water Fix project to bring the water down. It looked like they weren't going to have funding, so Governor Brown said, you know, let's just do one tunnel. It'll be okay, and then later we'll do another tunnel. So Metropolitan Water District stepped up last week and voted to put in billions of dollars extra to invest in that extra tunnel. And in doing so, they provide a better reliable source of water for all of Southern California. They're able to purchase... That water that will come down that tunnel will go directly to them. It's theirs, and they'll be able to sell that water. The only issue is to our residents is it will be $4.80 per resident for the extra tunnel, for the water fix, the entire project. However, that will be offset by the water that they're able to sell to the Central Valley because they're going to have this big reliable source. So it's a huge investment in reliable water for Southern California. So I just wanted to let everyone know about that. The other issue that I wanted to talk about is the Stranded Act for Nuclear Waste. That if maybe we could agendize that for the council to consider that, supporting that bill? Okay?
So just so the council's aware, I do appreciate the support of the council coming to the state of the city. I've recorded, and that's available on our YouTube channel for those who would like to learn a little bit more about the different items that we are pursuing as a city, including the critical quality of life pursuits. I also had the opportunity to go with our IBI consultants and present to the ACCO C Infrastructure and Technology Committee members about the city's position on the toll road, as well as share the data from IBI. And also had an opportunity to speak a little bit more about the LIFT program and highlight the successes we've had there as a possible template for the rest of Orange County. And then the final item was I also presented before the Rotary on the state of the city as well. And any community groups that would like to learn a little bit more about the city and a little bit more about where things stand, then I'm happy to present to them. And two other items, we also have... I'll be attending a mayor's meeting with the rest of the mayors of Orange County at the request of Judge Carter regarding the homeless questions. And I will do my best to represent the city there and provide some answers back. And I believe that is it. And then I also have an OCFA board meeting this next Thursday, and I'll be able to report back to the council. James, if you put that on the agenda, I'll do an OCFA report at my next meeting. And that is it. Okay, so nothing else? I'll do the adjournment. I move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting that will be held on May 1st, 2018. The closed council chambers located 100 Avenue to Presidio, San Clemente, California. Closed sessions will be considered at 5:00 p.m. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 p.m. A subsequent adjourned regular meeting will be held on May 10th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. An only handsome beach club located 105 West Avenue to Pico, San Clemente, for the purpose of meeting a joint session with the city's commissions and committees.
I'll second on the condition that you... We're really going to have a closed session only starting at 5:00 p.m.?
I know. That seemed a little weird. I'm not going to lie. It seemed a little weird. Yeah, I know. Well, I believe it'll fill up. So we got a motion by Brown, second by Schwartz, all those in favor? Aye, pass is 5-0. Good night, San Clemente.